Okay, well, I want to say good evening to everyone. And so good to see everyone. Tonight, we're going to call our board meeting to order. And we're going to stand and I will ask Dr. Wyatt, the waving flag will come up if you can lead us in the pledge.
It'd be my pleasure, Madam President. Let me just get the camera, no, and my camera adjusted. All righty, folks, is our flag present now? I can't tell.
It is.
All righty, ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance.
Every day, justice for all.
Thank you.
That was good. That was kind of in uniformity.
We're getting there.
Right. Okay. Before I go to the adoption of the agenda, the approval of the agenda, I do want to take an opportunity for a moment of silence for George Floyd's family and all of the family in our community. Of all of the things that are taking place, we definitely want to say prayers and send prayers out to those that have lost loved ones. And we know that this is truly a trying time that we would be remiss to not acknowledge it. And so if you would take a moment of silence with me at this time. Thank you so much. Thank you. 1.3, approval of the agenda. So move.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Wow, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you, I will take a vote. Dr. Wyatt?
I.
Dr. Flores?
I.
All right. Mr. Gallo?
He's not here.
Okay, Mr. Tillman?
Here, I mean, I.
Dr. Hill?
I.
And Ms. Rosales Medina?
I.
And Gwen Rogers, I. Motion carried, thank you. Tonight, on the agenda, 1.4 inspirational message is Dr. Volkmer.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, it's my pleasure to bring the inspirational message this evening. One of my very favorite things to talk about is our amazing students. And often you'll hear me say that, given the right opportunities and the right supports, there's nothing our students can't do. And we can point to examples in every field of endeavor there is on our students being world-class, literally world-class. And that's our mission to make them college and career-ready. And I love talking about their successes. And so at last board meeting, you saw a very talented group of mariachi musicians and singers from Texas. So I wanted to bring it a little closer to home for you today. And we have the Cajon Performance Choir under the direction of Matthew Thomas doing a virtual performance for us. So let's take a look, enjoy. So let's give that, give that a huge virtual round of applause. Yeah, absolutely. I thought the message of all people was particularly pertinent to what our country is facing currently. And so, so thankful to Principal Tina Bishop and her leadership, the rest of the administrative staff, Mr. Thomas, and what he was able to put together. I don't know how you do that virtually, but it sounded just terrific. So thanks to all. And that's it.
And I'm talking and I'm muted. Great job. I said that was a great inspiration. I'm still amazed at how the students is doing all these amazing things with technology, but what can we expect? Excellent students, thank you. All right, so we're moving now to item 2.1 Charter School Operation, Prop 39. I believe Dr. Mitchell is prepared to give us an update, a continuance from our previous board meeting. There was additional information that was needed. And we're going to hear from that tonight and then we will have comments. Thank you.
And I'm gonna go ahead and sign off right here.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, this Charter School presentation is really covers the generalities regarding the law. There's no need for Mr. Tillman to draw.
Oh, okay.
We want to educate our community on what Proposition 39 and its legal implications for the school district. Very general, we're not touching on Savant at all.
Okay, gotcha.
So if we want to ask him to join in.
I am going to do that right now.
So I'll wait.
All righty, give me a second. I'm gonna put you all on mute for a sec.
Carol, you're on mute.
Yeah, board, while we're waiting, I just wanted to share real, very quickly. This is just a reminder for the board and generally education for the public. We will ask that you save any comments you have about our Prop 39 dealings with Savant for closed session. So thank you very much for that. Dr. Mitchell, whenever you're ready.
Yes, just waiting on Mr. Tillman to get back in. Just give a couple of minutes for that. Unless you want me to go ahead and get started? Okay.
Okay, we can't get him back on the phone real quick, so go ahead.
Thanks so much, Madam President. Kenan Mitchell Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. And what we wanted to accomplish tonight was to give the community-wide, a community a real recourse in Charter School law around Proposition 39. We recognized over the last couple of board meetings that there were a lot of questions and commentary without, it seemed like our community could use a briefing on the law itself and what our obligation is as a district. And so I've asked Ernestine Hopwood, our Charter School Director, as well as our General Counsel, represented by Sukie, to take a few slides to talk through some of the, some of the major portions of Prop 39. And just for, again, as a general education of the community, again, to, again, that this presentation does not cover anything related to Savant, but just talks about Prop 39 in general. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ernestine, thank you.
Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Dr. Wyatt, Board Interim Superintendent Dr. Volkmer, Cabinet and esteemed guests. My name is Ernestine Hopwood. I'm the Director of Charter School Operations for SBCUSD. It is my pleasure to be presenting a general overview of Proposition 39 to the board and public tonight. I will be joined tonight for this presentation by Attorney Sukie Alualia from AALRR. First, we will take a look at the intent of the law. I want to begin by stating that, giving you some background on Prop 39. Prop 39 was passed by California voters in 2000. It forms the basis for the allocation of facilities between school districts and charter schools. The intent behind the law is that public school facilities, both classroom and non-classroom spaces, be shared fairly among all public school students, including those in charter schools. Under Prop 39, a school district must provide reasonably equivalent facilities upon a charter school's request. Pursuant to Prop 39, if a charter school in the district has at least 80 district students enrolled or meaningfully interested in enrolling, the school district must make facilities available to the charter school. In the school district means a charter school is authorized by the District, County Office of Education or State Board of Education. Next slide. Next, we will look at evaluating the request for facility. In-district ADA projections determine if or how much space must be offered. To be entitled to school district facilities, a charter school must have at least 80 in-district students enrolled or meaningfully interested in enrolling. In-district ADA projections are provided by the charter school in its November 1st request for facilities. In making a determination as to the facility to be offered, a district must engage in a review of the comparison schools. This involves the school district looking at the charter school's request for facilities and determining what district schools the charter school students would be coming from. When it comes to considering the facilities that must be offered to a charter school, the following must be taken into account. The facility should be continuous, meaning classrooms located together and not spread across multiple sites or the campus. A school district must look at and consider where the charter school students are coming from. The facility should be comparable in quality and quantity to the district schools. This means a school district is looking at classroom space, non-classroom space, athletic space, playground equipment, and so on. The facility should be similarly furnished and equipped. For example, desks, chairs, office furnishings, and so on. I will now turn the presentation over to Sukie, who will be providing more information about the offer of space and facilities and the Prop 39 timelines. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Sukie. Good evening to the board and to the cabinet. To continue with the comments that was made by Ms. Hopwood, when a district is considering a request for a facility under Proposition 39, after having determined that the school has, in fact, had either 80 in-district students that are currently enrolled or are meaningfully interested in enrolling, then the determination has to be made as to where the, what type of facility is going to be offered. And as Ms. Hopwood is indicating, the obligation is to provide something which is reasonably equivalent to those in which the student would be accommodated if they were attending other public schools. And that's a real key phrase that's there. Because it's the determination is based on where those students would have gone to school had they been going to a school in the district. Now, the next bullet is something that is, something that gets questioned a lot as to where exactly does the charter get offered a site? Many times the petition or the submission that is submitted on November 1st will have a desired space, but the district is not obligated to provide the exact location. However, where the school would want to locate must be taken into consideration. Now, in terms of Prop 39, as Ms. Hopwood was indicating, it was passed in 2000. And there were a lot of gray areas. And so we have these implementing regulations that we always consider. And in those areas, there's been some vague or gray areas. Unfortunately, there's been quite a bit of litigation in this Prop 39 space. And one of the seminal cases is this case that's cited here, which is the Ridgecrest Charter versus Sierra Sands case. And the proposition that this case stands for, it's an appellate court decision. It was not appealed, so it is applicable to all of the districts throughout the state of California. And what this says is that the starting point for considering where a school is to be assigned is that it will be assigned to a single site and then the attempts are going to be made to adjust it accordingly. Now, the, one of the key takeaways from this case is to look at the regulations' contempt, contemplate, excuse me, that there's going to be some disruption and dislocation. And at the end of the day, the offer, when it's made to a charter, needs to determine where it's best suited to fairly accommodate the request for facilities. And if that takes, and if that requires, I should say, moving district-operated programs or changing attendance areas, that is something that the district has to take into consideration. Next slide, please. And again, we'll talk a little bit in just a few seconds about the actual offer and the timing and all that. But as we said, you know, it's just reasonably equivalent. The question of what does, what is a district able to charge for that facility, knowing that there's a mandatory obligation to provide it, is something, again, that's set forth in the regulations. There is a specific provision that's set forth in the regulations that goes through what the calculation is. And generally, this is a calculation that's made by the district's business office. Because there's a number of criteria that are placed in there. Alternatively, the district can charge, because it's considered to be a substantially rent-free facility, 2% of the district, or, excuse me, the charter's operating budget. Additionally, the parties can also negotiate for other services or fees or other space that might be provided to the charter. Finally, the timeline for finally providing the facility is at least 10 working days. So essentially, that means two weeks prior to the first day of instruction. If there is good cause, you know, for example, like with the current COVID crisis, I think we could argue good cause, that can be shortened to seven days, but generally it's 10 days. Ten working days. Next slide, please. And finally, I'm just going to run through this somewhat quickly because I know that there's a lot of other things that are on the agenda tonight. But November 1st is, so first of all, let me say this is an annual request. Sometimes we do have districts that enter into multi-year agreements, but it can be an annual request. Then, request has to be submitted by no later than November 1st. And in the November 1st submission, the charter must set forth all of the information on which they base their projections for their in-district population. The district has a period of approximately 30 days to review that and to voice any objections that they may have. Generally, the objections are voiced if it's a brand-new charter and there's no basis for the projections. Say, for example, you've got a brand-new charter and they say, you know, we're going to have 500 students and there really hasn't been much community support for that. That's a basis perhaps for arguing that. Additionally, if you've got a charter that has had historically an enrollment of about 200 kids and it suddenly jumps to 800 kids, that can be a basis for objecting to that. Then, the next timeframe that comes up, then of course, is January 2nd, to which the charter can respond to the objections that have been raised by the district. Next slide, please. February 1 is one of the most important days in this process because that's the date by which the district must provide a written preliminary proposal of the space that's going to be offered. If there's no space that's going to be offered because there's less than 80 district, that has to be set forth as well. There is a lot of time, energy, effort that is put into preparing that proposal because that is the time at which the location, the number of classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, is set forth in writing for the charter. The next deadline is March 1st. And that's the deadline for the charter to respond to the district's preliminary offer with any counter-proposal if necessary. And then, of course, April 1st is when the district must make its final written notification of the space that's offered. And May 1st is when the charter school responds to that final offer. And then generally between, after that has taken place, the party are usually negotiating what's called a facilities use agreement that will then incorporate and memorialize the terms by which the facility will be used by the charter school. And so that's the end of my presentation. Ms. Hopwood, Dr. Mitchell and I are prepared to respond to any questions that the board may have.
I, I do not see any questions at this time.
Well, thank you, Board, Cabinet. Oh, I see one question from.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rosales Medina, I see.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, no, it's because I was having some difficulties. I wanted to just clarify with, with regarding the location. So my concern, and of course, you're just giving us an overview of what we can and what we can and so forth. But what is, with regards to the location, how it's located? Does it, does it offer or say anything regarding safety of where you're placing students?
Sukie, I believe in terms of comparability, that may be what we're asking Sukie. Sukie would love for you to address that, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. And Ms. Medina, with respect to that question, so as I was saying, you know, the first, the first thing that we look at is where does the charter want to locate? And that, we don't necessarily have to provide, we meaning any authorizing agency. That doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be provided space at that site, but they have to be provided space that is comparable to where those students would have otherwise attended. Obviously, the safety of students at any authorizing agency is of paramount importance. And that is one of the factors that would be, of course, considered in making that determination as to the space that's offered for the charter.
So yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify because in reality, and it's going to be later on in recommendations, I just wanted to clarify the location. So if one of our students was to go to our schools, they should be able to attend an environment similar to a situation they'd be attending at their local school. Which, if they aren't, should, I mean, are we held liable of the location? I'm just curious to see what, if they decide to go, if we don't have a facility that meets those needs, let's just say that we don't. But we have a facility that's less, that's, you know, different and would, and if, for instance, anything happens, would we be held liable because we don't offer the same type of location compared to where they would be attending if it was a traditional school? I hope that made sense.
So when we're looking at the space to be offered, there's a number of different things. So one is site, one is the number of classrooms. You've got the, you know, the field space, you've got administrative space, et cetera, et cetera. Charters are, so when, and also when we're looking at the request that comes in from a charter, you know, unfortunately, it's not, you'll have students that are coming in from several different schools. So when you're looking at it, it's not necessarily, you've got 100 kids coming from school A. You might have 20 kids from coming from school A, 15 from school B, 13 from school C, et cetera, et cetera. So the charter is not entitled to what we call a super school, but they're entitled to what the students from the comparable schools would have been entitled to. And so what that means is that if there's playground space, if there's field athletic space at that comparable school, then they're entitled to that. In terms of the responsibility of the district providing a space that's not necessarily comparable, that's something that the parties do have the problem, the ability to negotiate outside of the Prop 39 process. And then, of course, in a facilities use agreement, there are indemnification provisions and insurance provisions that protect the rights of both parties.
All right, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't see any other questions. And then just one last clarification is we are at the timeline where the, this timeline versus the facilities negotiations or adjustments is where we are now, correct? And there's a difference.
Yeah, Board, we prefer to talk about.
Sure. For any charter school is what I'm saying. For any charter school. Okay, thank you. And if there are no other questions, I don't see any other questions, we are going to now move to 3.1, closed session, public comments. Is Karen on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Are there any public comments for closed session?
For closed session for Savant, yes, there is.
Okay. You're up.
Do you want to read that verbiage?
I'm sorry, yep, I need to click on that. I do need to click on. Okay, this is a time that members of the public will be provided an opportunity to directly address the board about any items described under the closed session. Comments are limited to five minutes or less. Public comments on one subject are limited to 30 minutes. Okay.
I'm ready. We have 75 public comments. I will try to read as many as I can in the 30 minutes. All right, the first one is from SPTA President Ashley Akala. Good evening, Board, President Rogers, members of the board and cabinet. Tonight, I'm addressing you on behalf of our members on the proposed charter school co-location. Over the last several weeks, dozens of stakeholders have come together to collaboratively draft a plan for a physically distant school reopening. Throughout, throughout those meetings, it was made clear that we are not going to be able to utilize our spaces in the same way we have previously. The COVID-19 pandemic will cause chaos when students eventually return to their physical classrooms. All schools will be required to adjust to a new normal of social distancing, heightened cleanliness measures and other safety protocols. Any actual unused space will be needed to help schools achieve the requirements of smaller class sizes. Co-location under Prop 39 restricts access for staff and students to all of the available space on their campus. Under a flawed state law known as Prop 39, neighborhood public schools can be forced to give away unused space to charter operators. In reality, that unused space is not unused at all. It oftentimes houses arts and music classrooms, science centers, parent centers, computer labs and other resources that contribute to a rich, vibrant educational program. And just because a charter operator can co-locate does not mean that they have to. This invasion is a choice that charter operators make, a choice that hurts students in neighborhood public schools. We understand that there are legal implications to the district because it is a law that was passed under Proposition 39. However, we believe it is severely flawed and diverts resources and money away from our schools. For these reasons, the San Bernardino Teachers Association will continue to advocate against co-location of any charter school onto one of our public school campuses. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Eva Tillman. To the Board President, Gwendolyn Rogers, members of the board, superintendent and cabinet, good evening. My name is Eva Tillman, principal and co-founder of Savant Preparatory Academy of Business. And I am submitting this public comment on behalf of all co-founders, Gia Reese, Jeanette Balkazar and myself, to encourage the board to approve our request for Prop 39 facilities. I would like to begin by saying thank you. Many board members recognize the quality program that we have been able to offer here at Savant. And that would not have been possible without the tremendous support of the community and unanimous board approval that we received on March 22, 2018. Tonight, we hope that the board truly considers the work we've been able to do with the children of San Bernardino City and makes a decision to honor their legal obligation to provide our scholars with a facility to learn and grow. To begin, the comments made by the San Bernardino Teacher Union President seem to have had an impact on the board's decision to deny our Prop 39 request. In her comments, she mentioned how much the teachers and students at Del Vallejo would suffer if our scholars shared a campus with them, and that hurts. 96% of our school population is African-American. To hear that the mere presence of our black transitional kindergarten to fourth grade students would cause suffering to the Del Vallejo campus is heartbreaking and certainly not our intention. Her remarks on behalf of San Bernardino teachers is probably part of the reason why so many African-American families have chosen Savant Prep to educate their scholars over their district homeschool. The idea that our kids are not your kids is troubling and speaks to exactly why our country is sadly divided now. Furthermore, we understand that budget is a concern for the district. And as an LEA, we empathize with the cuts that may come as a result of COVID-19. However, to say that there isn't enough money to cover the cost of the facility upgrades outlined in this agreement should not impede the district from making the right decision, especially since the site in question is the most cost-effective option. I have watched many board meetings and I have respected the fact that SBCUSD has never used categorical funding that comes from taxpayer dollars as a primary reason to not provide students with the best educational resources. This Prop 39 facilities agreement should not be the exception. Finally, I would like to leave you with this. In response to the recent murders of George Floyd, Breanna Taylor, and Ahmed Aubrey, the CTC just recently made a statement. It reads, "As a union of 310,000 educators across California, we have an obligation to act. This is not a time for us to look away. We must grapple with the fact that our schools, our practices, policies, and even our own union are shaped by inequities, bias, and institutional racism. Our black students and educators experience schools, the police, and this pandemic very differently than that of our white students and educators. Saying Black Lives Matter isn't enough. We need to actively show it in our works towards anti-racism on a personal, structural, and institutional level. We are grieving and we are outraged. Together, we must continue the call for justice and to hold powerful people, organizations, and each other accountable. What are you doing to work toward anti-racism every day? Today, this SBCUSD Board can answer that question with a positive vote for Prop 39 facilities for Savant Prep. SBCUSD can show that they have made a positive decision for the interest of all students, including the African-American, African-American students in their community. Thank you." The next one is from Christopher Tackell. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Volker and other members of the Cabinet. I've come to speak to you on behalf of Savant Charter School for facilities at Del Vallejo Middle School. Prop 39 is a voter-approved law that not only governs facility requests for charter schools but benefits district schools as it lowered the voter threshold to build new facilities from 67 to 55% as a result of Prop 39. As a result, Prop 39 has been utilized to bring in hundreds of millions of dollars to SBCUSD for new facilities and modernize existing facilities. Savant Charter has made a legal request for facilities in November 2019 and met all legal timelines. Eva Tillman and her team have accepted the district's offer for facilities at Del Vallejo. Eva Tillman has been upfront and transparent, and I believe the district should show her the same respect. Put simply, Eva Tillman is simply an inspiration. I first observed her teach at Hardy Brown and afterwards told Tom Hallerson that if she ever applied as a teacher for the district to hire her immediately. He did hire her and she was amazing at Jones. When Eva and her team approached me about a charter, I thought her plan and idea would work for our community. The school has been a positive impact on our students and their families. One particular fond memory I have is when visiting, I met the parents of a child that had been referred to Community Day School for behavior issues. The child was now attending Savant and excelling. The father volunteered at the school every day. The mother shed tears of joy at how the school had changed her child's life and future. Savant didn't just help the child, it transformed the entire family. Tonight, you have to make a decision regarding this request. Yet, I remind you that in 1954, the Supreme Court made a, made a difficult but unanimous decision with Brown versus Board of Education. It was not the popular decision, but it was the right decision. We are at tough times right now. Our community is hurting and we are all scrambling for limited resources and truly trying to seek the light as darkness surrounds us. I close with the utmost respect to all of you and ask that your decision not be for me, charters, district, teachers, or even Eva. Make your vote tonight for the most vulnerable, and that is for the students that attend Savant and provide them the access to the facilities they legally deserve. Thank you. The next one is from Lilian Karina Rosinos. I want to mention that I've never seen a teacher like the Savant Preparatory Teachers dedicated to instruct and discipline our children. They deserve to have a dignified place so they can support our children. Keeping in mind that San Bernardino County is, is bad for education with a very bad grade, and you know it, and this school that promotes education. I would love it if you could see the children on a regular school day. I wish for you to help us and support us. We deserve a school. A comment from Arneese Hall. Please keep Savant Prep open for education. The school is a perfect example of educational excellence for all children, especially African, African-American children thriving for a better education. Next one is from Tiana Phipps. I am a parent of the third grade scholar at Savant Prep Academy of Business. Savant is a learning environment filled with skilled educators who love and care for the academic achievements and overall well-being of their learners. If this learning space was stationed inside of a small library, I would continue to bring my daughter to learn and grow with Savant. The message is clear. My daughter enters to learn and is continuously learning to build when she departs. Although the atmosphere they have created, created is incredible, the staff and students deserve a bigger space. My eight-year-old daughter says we need more space so we can get out of the classroom and go to the library to check out books that maybe nobody is even reading right now and have a computer room and science labs for experiments. My daughter's confidence has grown, her care for learning has increased. Leaving a dual-version Spanish program where her primary study was Spanish, my daughter's reading level is up and her overall attitude about school is better because of Savant and her third grade teacher, Ms. Tillman. Savant Prep is an innovative school with great vision for the future. These scholars should be focusing on their next business ideas and how it will help San Bernardino County and furthermore, the world, not policies or politics that stifle their growth potential. Thank you. Amber Marie Vito. I am currently a first grade teacher at Savant Preparatory Academy. I would like to direct your attention in a direction which opposes a statement previously made in relation to our tentative move onto the Del Vallejo Middle School campus. Within the comment made to the Board, an S, SBCUSD employee stated that our school should not obtain the designated section of the campus because the staff of the, at the Del Vallejo campus should focus on caring for their students and utilize those classrooms to spread students out due to the pandemic. May I be as bold to say that in light of the pandemic, our district should be reaching out and including all students with the intention of providing a safe place to learn and grow. During these times, we should be working together stronger than ever in an act of selflessness, not selfishness. Savant Prep has a bold vision and intention which aligns with SBCUSD's goal of making hope happen. We do everything in our power to ensure that our scholars are given a safe place to not only learn and grow but to truly prosper. Do our scholars not deserve the security of, security of and stability of a facility? I hope to utilize my comment to guide you all towards viewing the situation from every angle. Look at it, look at this from not only your point of view but ours as well. As stated in our school's affirmation statement, we enter to learn and, and depart to build. And we only hope that you all will help us do just that. Thank you. Chast, excuse me, Chastid Jefferson. As a parent and educator and active member in the community, I am asking you to approve Prop 39 facilities agreement for Savant Prep. Savant Prep is about building strong leaders and entrepreneurs who will influence positive change in our community. When it came time to choose a school for my twin sons, my husband and I felt Savant Prep was the best fit. I heard about the great things happening in the school and decided to give it a try. It was one of the best decisions we made. My sons look forward to, to attending school daily. At Savant, they are challenged academically, attend small classroom sizes which give opportunity for more attention for each student. They learn about their culture that impacts their identity, and they are prepped as the entrepreneurs they strive to become. Also, Ms. Tillman is a strong leader who is dedicated to seeing her kids excel in and out of the classroom. She takes the time to know each student individually and holds each student accountable for their learning and choices in life. The staff as well truly invest in the lives of each student. As a high school teacher in the San Bernardino District, there are many options I can choose from. But Savant is the best fit for not just my kids but many other kids who attend. Whether we choose to send our kids to a private, public, or charter school in San Bernardino, as a member in this community, these are all our kids, and it is important as a parent to have a choice and choose any place for our kids to learn and thrive. Approving Prop 39 facility request helps provide another resource and option for parents in our community. Not approving Pop, Prop 39 for facilities agreement will be taking away a safe place where many kids are thriving as scholars, building character, and preparing to become strong entrepreneurial leaders in the community. So please approve Prop 39 for Savant Prep. Thank you. Tamara Florence White. My, um, I am a Savant Prep Academy of Business parent. Savant is one of the most amazing charter schools. Not only has Savant built an amazing community of families that act as extended family, but they've also pushed our children to be their absolute best academically. They have taught our children to have integrity and to have a strong sense of identity in who they are. Even during this pandemic, COVID-19, they have continued in excellence. The staff of Savant has spent countless hours creating a distance learning curriculum that would make their scholars successful in closing the achievement gap. I have yet to find another school that exhibits these qualities with success, especially a charter school. They have built a village from the ground up with the philosophy of each one, each one, literally making our scholars a top priority. Savant parents have a high participation rate, ensuring the success of our scholars and the school itself. What school can you honestly say that about? Especially in San Bernardino with so much negative stigma surrounding the city itself. Because of their commitment to student achievement and their mission, enter to learn, depart to build, Savant is growing tremendously. With growth comes new territory. Without your support, the scholars of Savant cannot reach their full potential. Not only will it devastate the scholars this institution was built for, it will also devastate a community full of hope and leave them without a place to call home. I would like to commission you to be a part of that growth that Savant and the city of San Bernardino so desperately needs by supplying them with a facility under the Prop 39 facilities use. With your support, more students can experience the amaze, amazingness of Savant and become productive citizens each building in our community. Thank you. Deborah Cole. I am writing to the San Bernardino Unified School District Board all the way from Missouri City, Texas. Because I feel the Savant Prep School of Business students are positioned to impact the future of San Bernardino, California, and beyond. I was a product of the San Bernardino schools back in the seventies, and I received an excellent education for my generation at that time. Today's children are faced with a multiplicity of economic, societal, environmental, as well as cultural influences that have not prepared them for today's generational issues in the present educational platform. We need to, we need to provide a variety of approaches to capture the advancing challenges we face in society today. Savant Prep School of Business represents one way to broaden the standard education track and provides more one-on-one attention to the students who may not excel in a traditional school setting. I stand for giving every child an avenue to become the future leaders of not only the city of San Bernardino, but the country and our world. I'm asking the Board to consider giving every student an opportunity for a choice of venues to learn. Savant Prep School of Business has a proven track record for academic excellence. Please support and provide them a place to thrive. Thank you. Nikita Holly. I am a parent of a wonderful eight-year-old daughter named Grace. Grace is my only child, so everything that my husband and I have and everything that we do is for her. One of the most important things that we do is strive to provide our daughter with the greatest possible chance to be a happy, successful, and hard-working individual. One of these ways that we believe we will achieve that goal is to provide her with the greatest education that we can. We moved to Redlands to help achieve this goal, but due to unforeseen and uncontrolled circumstances, we moved back to my hometown of San Bernardino where I was born and raised. I, as I, as the upcoming school year approached, I began to research the new school which she would attend, which was Vermont Elementary. I researched the test scores, the parents' opinions, and bullying. It left me worrisome, to say the least, but the demographics off, also left me disturbed. In Redlands, my daughter attended a school with an African, African-American population of 9%, which caused a few difficulties and incidences, to say the least. But at Vermont Elementary, African-Americans made up less than 2% of the student population. The number was alarming. I have a daughter who is extremely shy and struggled to make friends her entire, entire educational experience in Redlands, which led the, to incidences of bullying due to her differences from her classmates, such as her hair and her skin color. But to do this, to center to a place with an even lower percentage was too overwhelming for me, not because it would be impossible for her to make friends, but the odds would be even more greatly stacked against her. Then I heard about a school named Savant Prep that strove for not only excellence, but to prepare those students for the future with their curriculum such as business and financing. Not only this, but Savant had something with my daughter, which my daughter had never experienced. Students who resembled her. Students in all shades of brown and all hair textures. I'll never forget the shock that she had when she saw that so many of the kids had brown sk, skin like her. It brought tears to my eyes because for so many years, she truly did feel like an outcast and noticed that she was different from the other students. Having my daughter attend this school has been a life-changing experience in so many ways. They push and teach every child to be the best that they can be. They teach excellence, structure, discipline, self-esteem, and pride in who they are and who they have the ability to become. The principal, each teacher, and each staff member are so personal and care about each child and every child. It amazes me how each staff member can name every single child by name, even those not in their classroom. But a quiet child who may seem to be, to get lost in the crowd, to have their name known, remembered, means so much to me and my daughter. My daughter has been pushed harder than she ever has and has learned more than she ever has. Not because she wanted to, but because her teacher believed she could. I have never seen a school like this, nor do I think there is another to equal it. Never has a school truly felt like a community of people who agree on a common purpose, providing our children with the best possible education to give them a true chance to succeed and survive. The approval of the Prop 39 facilities agreement is so vital to our children. As they grow, the school needs to grow, but we can't do it without your approval. Please help our children, help your children. These children are future and yours, and if we don't show them what they are truly capable of, they will become just another statistic. Thank you and God bless. Darlene Gilbert. Savant Prep Academy should have a new facility. Tiffany Glenn. I'm a parent of a child in the third grade at Savant Prep. It's very important as a parent and resident of San Bernardino County that my voice gets heard. Savant is a beautiful school. We have great teachers and parents that care tremendously about the welfare and the care of the students. My child has learned more and has had more opportunities than I can imagine, such as a small school. He also came in second place in the Black African-American History Bee. Savant deserves their own space and facility in which they can grow. I couldn't imagine any other school for my son. The education is top-notch for a single parent like myself. It's like him being at an expensive prep academy. It's very important that, that survive. I think it's very important they survive, receive the funding for their facility. Thank you. Joy Lynn Harper. I'm a second grade scholar at Savant Preparatory Academy. Savant is my learning community and my family. I have missed them since social distancing happened. I look forward to being able to gather in person with them again. In order for that to happen, we need you to support us. We need a building, we need a place to meet, a place to learn, and a place to grow. We are your students too. Please make hope happen for us again. Jacqueline Jones. I would like to thank the Board for its service to the students of San Bernardino. I understand the difficulty of balancing a budget with policies, procedures, and particularly now during the COVID-19 pandemic and our national state of emergency, because there has been a historic divide between the traditional across the country to find solutions to satisfy both sides of this divide. I am the custodian for a Savant scholar, and I have been the recipient of a sc, school leadership, its founders, administrators, teachers, and support staff that cares about its scholars, provides a safe, secure environment for learning, encourages academic excellence from all its students, and promotes community both within its walls and outside. From your statements during the last meeting, it appears that your experiences with Savant, as it pertains to the Board's administrative interaction with the school, have been similar. As your experiences with Savant have been positive and the school has met your requirements on their end, I am writing to ask that the Board reevaluate its decision to put this project on hold. Lifting the hold on this project will, will allow Savant an opportunity to open the fall school year on time and get scholars back on track to their normal system of learning. Again, thank you for your service. Okay, Gabrielle, Gabrielle Cooper. Um, I'm. I am a Savant Prep. I'm the parent of Curtis Cooper, Savant Prep scholar. I am also a proud Savant parent. I am writing this letter in hopes that Prop 39 Facilities Use Agreement will be approved for the school year 2021. My son Curtis has attended Savant since it opened. The above affirmation statement is what all of the scholars. Oh, I'm so sorry, I missed something. It's up here. We, the lines of Savant Prep for Academy of Business, pledge to be the future business leaders of our community. I will be on top of my game. I will step up and take my throne. I will devastate mediocrity and reject commonality. I will not cheat, lie, or compromise my integrity. I will take responsibility for my actions. I will make the grade and lead the way. I will enter to learn and depart to build. The above affirmation statement is what all of the scholars of Savant recite daily. This affirmation statement not only gives them confidence to be productive, but also provides them a sense of self and integrity. Since Curtis began his educational journey at Savant, I have seen a huge difference in the education he has received. He is excited to learn and go to school more than he has ever been. The tools that the educators at Savant have equipped with him with has allowed him to grasp concepts and excel farther than we have imagined. Savant has been successful in providing a safe space for every scholar that attends its school. They have influenced every scholar to be their very best academically. They have not only given our scholars hope, but they have also given us parents. We have gained new hope and a new perspective. Imagine more children of San Bernardino succeeding, building, and becoming productive citizens in the future. Savant has become our village, and without it, we will fall. I want to impress upon you to partner with Savant by providing them with the space that allows for growth. With your support, our scholars' futures are bright and limitless. Please be a part of the positive change that this city needs. And I have one more. Should I can make it in the 30-minute time limit?
Go ahead.
This one is from Kiona Robinson. I write this hoping and praying for resolution. Savant Prep Academy of Business has been the only school my daughter has known. This school has excelled and surpassed all of my expectations. My daughter is in the first grade and is going to the second grade. She has maintained being an honor roll student the entire time at Savant. Please understand and hear the parents and administrators of Savant. I know this world sadly revolves around money and that public schools and charter schools need grants, but at what expense? The children? I need this school. My daughter needs this school. All of our scholars at Savant need this school to remain open and to have its own facility. Why, you may ask? I know that the ultimate goal that the amazing teachers and administrators have is excellence. They want my daughter and all the children at Savant to excel, even when they didn't receive payments on time. They never held it against us or our children. These teachers and administrators are fighting the same fight we are because they see more than a dollar, they see change that is needed in today's society, which starts with our children's. They can change the world. And that's the time I have in 30 minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. And if that being all on our closed session public comments, we're now going to adjourn to our closed session. Into the viewing audience, we will return after our closed session. Wow, you all are fast.
Hello there, President Rogers.
All right, so good evening again to our viewing audience. We are now returning from our closed session, and we are at item 4.1, which is the approval of Charter's Facilities Agreement by and between San Bernardino City Unified School District and Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter Schools.
Move to approve.
I was gonna read the be resolved. You want the be resolved?
That's the motion. I'm making a motion to.
Okay, it's been, it's been, it's been, there's been a motion and a second, and now I'm going to call for the vote. Actually, you have to write this down and remember you all. All right, Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Mr., oh, I'm sorry, he's not here. Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Okay, motion, Carrie. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the Charter Facilities Agreement by and between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Savant Prep Academy Business Charter School. Thank you all for your vote. We are now moving to 5.1, Student Board Members Report and Comments. I want to say to all of the board members, you may or may not be aware, this is the final night of our student board member team. This is, and I believe they are both Ms. Duhart and Mr. Morales, I think they are on the line. And I do want to make mention that Ms. Duhart is the valedictorian of San G, correct? Is it San G? Do I have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong school. Dr. Hill, correct me. You're muted.
Indian Springs High School.
Sorry, Indian Springs. Well, she was in the newspaper, and we were very excited about that. Our students are representing well, class of 2020, a class with the vision. And so if they're on the screen, I can't see the numbers. I'm gonna ask you both to provide comments, if you will.
Oh, hello, I'm here.
All right.
I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to just talk with you guys, and I've learned so much being in the room with you guys and just talking with you. I've got to learn you guys personally, and I just, I just think it's beautiful. It's a wonderful opportunity. I wish the best of luck for the next student board members who come in the following years. And once again, I just want to thank you for this huge opportunity. It's been a real game-changer, life experience for me, so I just want to thank you for that.
And have you decided where you'll be going? Do you want to share that with us?
Yes, I will be going to Azusa Pacific University with my older brother Jonathan.
Oh, congratulations, and you will be majoring in?
Mathematics. I want to become an SBCUSD mathematics teacher.
Wow, yeah, we're giving you, yes, yay. All right, well, congratulations again. We appreciate everything that you have done, where you've traveled with us, and we hope that you have had an exciting time, and it will add to your future. Is Mr. Morales on?
Yes, I'm here. I just want to start off with a giant congratulations to the entire class of 2020. You did it. Congrats to Kayla on being the valedictorian of Indian Springs and your acceptance to Azusa Pacific. That's amazing. It's been a great opportunity to be able to represent each and every student throughout the amazing district that we have, Kayla, Anessa, and to the rest of the board. It has been my absolute pleasure serving SBCUSD alongside you this past school year. Time and time again, we persevere through difficult situations, and I have complete confidence that the district will continue to make its way out of tribulations in the years to come. For the last time, thank you and have a good night.
Oh, great. Thank you again. We wish you well. Do you want to share with us where you're going or what you will be doing in the future?
I'll be going to California State University, San Bernardino, to major in English. I hope to be an English teacher here in the district someday.
Absolutely. Wow, wonderful. Dr. Volkmer, you have any comments there? Congratulations.
I just want to say, thank you very, very much to both Eric and Kayla. You guys have been awesome. I'm so looking forward to seeing you guys coming back as teachers. I know Kayla and I have had the discussion about our tuition reimbursement program and becoming a classified employee and letting us pay for your schooling. Eric, that's available to you as well. I would have loved to have that option when I was working my way through college. So any way we can help you in your journey, please don't hesitate to call on us. We want, we love to see, we love to hire our alumni, and we'd love to see you guys come back as teachers for us. That's just great. Thank you so much for everything you've done this year.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer.
All right, and I do need to bring Mr. Tillman back in. Hold on one second.
The best of luck, you guys. Yeah. Madam President, can I tell the student board member something? We need you. We need you to come back and teach our kids. And I just wish you the best and mathematics teachers and good English teachers. And so, see you soon as employees.
Awesome. Okay, thank you all. And we will now move to 6.1, our public comments. Karen, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. We have three public comments. And the first one did not leave a name. However, they said, "The entire month of May is Asian American Pacific Islander Month." The SBCUSD district's social media posted a message tonight from Mr. Volkmer acknowledging the diverse workforce that serves a diverse student population. The SBCUSD social media posts all month reflected not a single mention of the Asian American Pacific Islander Month. The White House issued a proclamation on the significant contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to every aspect of our society. Please have your social media administrator also include Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders when celebrating cultures that represent students you serve. The next one is from Livia Servin, a parent. "I'm a parent of an elementary student. I am deeply concerned with the fact our students will not be ready for the next school year due to the fact they did not receive a full instructional year. Will there be any summer school programs available via distance learning? Also, what about the Grab and Go school mills? Do they end on June 4th? I know a lot of families that rely on them as a way of supplementing mills in this difficult time. Many families have lost their jobs or been laid off due to COVID-19. In the matter of Hazel Health, will it still be available through the summer or does it end on June 4th along with the school year? Is there anyone I can email with all my questions and concerns? I've left public comments multiple times, but my questions are never answered. Thank you." And the last one is from Sergio Luna. "Honorable members of the board, interim superintendent, and cabinet, this comment is in regards to item 8.1 Budget and LCAP Update. As you all know, since early April, we have been speaking out against the misuse of 9.5 million from supplemental and concentration funds meant for use of direct services for our students that were instead budgeted for the SBCUSD Police Department. Today, we want to continue to uplift this with the hope to actually be heard. ICUC students, parents, and families have always voiced that it is of utmost importance to ensure that as many resources as possible be dedicated to programs that directly benefit low-income, English-language learners, African-American, and foster students. We are continuously listening to our community's concerns and ways they would like to see their schools improve. We believe, excuse me, we believe there are many different ways in which these funds could be better used, such as increasing mental health professionals supporting students at every school, social-emotional counselors and support staff creating wellness centers at every school campus, meaningful parent engagement that builds parents' understanding of our educational system, supporting parents and students in advocating for students' education, and other ways that address the racial disparities faced by students and their families in our district. We continue to believe that this is an opportunity for our district to fully redirect these mismanaged funds to programs that will have a real impact on our students and families. We continue to uplift that funding for police and security should not exceed funding for real school climate reform, including restorative practices, having mental health professionals on all of the school campuses, school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports, social-emotional learning and wellness centers. Second, we would also like to uplift some serious concerns about the way our district has laid out priorities on the LCPA, without, I think that might be LCAP, without really taking legitimate parent, student, and community input in the decision-making process of the LCAP plan. Time and time again, we continue to hear that the SBCUSD is doing a tremendous job in the way our LCAP comes together year after year. But if you ask and really listen to many parents and students that have attempted to feel like an important part of this process, you would realize that the whole story is not being told. This is especially true during this year's LCAP process, which because of the unprecedented circumstances we are in, have had to be done virtually. While these concerns are specifically about the virtual LCAP meetings, much of the same can be said about the in-person meetings prior to COVID-19. The virtual meetings held on April 28th and May 20th were extremely disappointing for many of us that attended. During these meetings, it really seemed like we were only watching a presentation. There was only a short segment for questions where the community was able to ask questions, but no answers were given. The fact is that this is not real community input as far as being a true partner in the decision-making processes of LCAPs. As of right now, many parents and students feel that their voice is not truly reflected in the LCAP presentations. Community input is key to local control funding formula, and we have seen time after time again that in our district, that is not well-reflected. Currently, our district is in the process of adopting our next LCAP budget and plan, but is lacking real community input to what priorities and programs are in place. During the LCAP meetings of 2019, 2020, a full supplemental and concentration funds allocations were never shared with the community. Otherwise, families would have been vocal on some allocations. During the LCAP presentation of mid-May 2019, the only budget shared contained less than 24 million and was a presentation where, when questioned about certain allocations, no one had answers to. Now we know the SC LCAP funds are about 140 million. On April 28th, 2020, and May 20th, 2020, the community cried with members from AAPAC, D-LAC, CAC, ICUC, COPE, BLU, YAP, and many others expressed disappointment in the supplemental and concentration funds used for SBCUSD Police Departments and operations. We strongly urge the San Bernardino City Unified School Board to give direction to our district to reevaluate the current process of our LCAP meetings and way of engagement to be designed to truly listen to community input that is reflected in the next three-year LCAP plan. A direction that takes into account legitimate SBCUSD parents, students, and community input and engagement in the decision-making processes that is able to be differentiated from district staff. Second, we urge you to make sure that no LCFF supplemental and concentration funds are used for district police and related operations, instead used for direct services that will increase academic support to students and families in SBCUSD. We look forward to our continued collaboration and work moving forward to ensure the true intent of local control funding formula comes to a reality to all of our African-American students, English learners, foster youth, students with disabilities, and low-income students benefit directly from the supplemental and concentration funds they generate. We hope that together we can mend the misuse of these funds and find more equitable ways to reinvest these funds into our communities. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us at your earliest convenience. And that is it.
Thank you, Karen. And Dr. Volkmer?
Yes, Madam President, we do have board another, a number of other public comments, all related to graduation. We can certainly read all of those public comments, but I do have a statement that I think will clarify all of the, we've reviewed them. I do have a statement that I think will clarify all of the questions and concerns that people have. So we could do that now, or we could listen, certainly listen to, have Karen read those public comments.
Board, there was, we know that there was some clarification of some data that went out last night. It was immediately clarified within a reasonable time, but there still was some disconnect with our message surrounding our in-person graduations. So there is a number of individuals that wanted to speak to that, but we had spoken to the district on last night. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I think if we're gonna treat it like a regular meeting, you have to. You have to hear the comments from the public. Unless somehow they can tell you that, do you have communication? They can say they don't want their comment read. I don't know how you do that, so.
So let's go ahead, let's go ahead and read then, and then I know that Dr. Volkmer can follow up on it.
Madam President, I have my name in the queue as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Flores, go ahead.
And I concur with Mr. Tillman. This is a public meeting. The protocol is that we read all public comments. And then it's really great, Dr. Volkmer, that you have a comment. That will be great because we'll hear their concerns, and then you'll have the solutions that we've already. concerns, and then you'll have the, the solutions that we've already.
Great, thank you.
We've worked for that, because we do need to make that correction. Thank you. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Madam President, it will be for 30 minutes, right, on this topic?
Yes, she has the guidelines, you know, how to stop at 30 minutes. It might be less, though. Okay, Karen, we're ready for you.
Okay, I have no one here to help me time, so someone could time me for 30 minutes to make sure. I would appreciate it. I think I can get through them. There are 29 comments. All right, here we go. The first one's from Gisela Robles. Good afternoon. I want to thank you for the opportunity for our comments to be heard. As a parent of three students, one being a senior, I want to express my disappointment at the leadership of the SBCUSD in charge of making decisions as far as graduation ceremonies. Our kids and parents are going through really hard times as it is with everything going around, as I'm sure you are aware. The miscommunication and neglect to our class of 2020 is just not right. First, you sent a survey not to ask our kids' opinion about what they wanted to do, but on how they wanted to look on a virtual graduation. You stated graduations would be canceled, and when the meeting came, you changed your story to postponed. Then I remember Mr. Tillman suggesting to give our seniors their yearbooks like other districts did. The only school so far that did that is Cajon. They took the time to really make their students feel special. Why are details like Cajon's not carried out, carried throughout all SBCUSD high schools? Even my sixth grader's school had a drive-through event to give them their sixth grade certificate, and that made a world of difference for her. Yesterday, we received again the message that the in-person graduation was canceled and the virtual graduation would take place. Once again, it was changed to postponed at a later time. Yet today, again, the school counselor sent a message that it was canceled. The miscommunication is just hurting even more the feelings of so many looking forward to this week. We were helping, hoping for at least a drive-through graduation, something that it has not even been considered by you, even though many other districts around us are doing them for their students. It is so sad that the community had to take matters on their, into their own hands to celebrate our class of 2020 with groups like Adopt a Senior and, and parades organized by parents. I know there's a lot in your hands with the upcoming year, but I really believe something else could have happened to get the proper closure for our class of 2020. Thank you. The next one is from Tatiana Chavez. Please give our kids a graduation. Virtual is not enough. The surrounding schools and cities give their students a drive-through. Give our hard-working SBCUSD students one as well. They deserve better than a virtual. The next one is from Susanna. I'm a current senior at a Royal Valley High School, and I wanted to know if the virtual graduation was going to be the only thing us seniors are going to have. May I remind you that you sent out a letter stating that the in-person graduation was only going to be postponed, and that gave us, that gave students and parents hope that we were going to have as close to a traditional graduation as possible. Now you tell us that we are going to have one, a one-hour video, and that's it for our senior year. Other schools have been able to have drive-through or in-person graduations, so why can't we? You guys are already planning for next year, but we, the class of 2020, are still here. I truly believe that we as students deserve better because we already lost our prom, grad bash and a part of senior year. Don't take our graduation away. There are different ways to celebrate our graduation rather than just a video. Anita Partita. Hello, I am a student at a Royal Valley High School, and I had some concerns regarding senior graduation. The thing is that many seniors were questioning when the board will discuss our graduation and if it will occur. Hearing from other high schools, they did a graduation drive-through, which is safe and an idea most students agree upon. After a while, there were no plans in creating a drive-through graduation or any, or anything similar, which means some people don't care for our graduation. All that is happening in the world and in America, there should be little, there should be a little effort for our graduation. I appreciate all the teachers and staff that have, that have done to brighten our moods, but we worked for four years, and with all that work, and in the end, to have a virtual graduation isn't the same. I speak for some friends that are attending their first graduation in their family, and yet have it ruined by a virus and I don't know what that word is. So I ask you if the board could listen to all the feedback and the wonderful ideas that are to make not only our graduation worth the wait, but to satisfy all senior students who have been excited for a graduation. Thank you. Erica Saucedo. Disappointed in the district's decision to just have a virtual graduation. I understand that there are limits on large gatherings because of COVID-19, and there might even be some fear due to the recent events throughout the city, but have we explored all options of alternative ceremonies for the class of 2020? Sandy Valdez. Many seniors do not feel as if the school board has put any effort in creating a graduation that is not virtual. In previous school board meetings, our comments have been ignored. We are asking for a simple drive-through graduation that could be taken place within the month of June. Other school districts have proven that a drive-through graduation is not complicated to plan or have. If our schools were able to plan a whole drive-through textbook drop-off, why is the same effort not being put for us to receive our diploma? Do not use current events as an excuse because drive-through graduations are still happening all around us. This is something we deserve. Shan- Shantae Tucker. I would like to know why SBCUSD is not having drive-through graduations on the days the seniors are supposed to officially graduate. To have a virtual graduation is not acceptable, acceptable. Prolonging until November, December will not result in 100% turnout as some of these kids will be off to college, the military or working. Dates for this change with the wind, and no proper notification is given to the parents or seniors. According to the 2019-2020 school year calendar, the official last day of school is June 4th. Why are things planned after the school year officially ends? I am thoroughly annoyed and disappointed in our school district, especially when surrounding districts have stepped up to the plate to make it happen for their seniors. Sandra Pena. We are asking for a drive-through graduation ceremony for our students. Our surrounding districts are having ceremonies for their students. Why can't we? We can follow CDC guidelines, maybe allowing only two to four guests per student to avoid hu- huge crowds. All we ask is for the class of 2020 not be forgotten. Thank you for your support. Joanne Kovik. Our kids need to have a graduation eve, even if we have to wait until August. Gloria Maq, I am so sorry, I cannot pronounce her last name, Maq Quinales. No, I said that terribly wrong. Please give these graduates what they worked for and deserve. We need a date for an in-person or drive-through graduation. Based on last night's error on Facebook and Instagram and on both district pages, it seems as if you are only planning a virtual graduation. Melissa. Melissa with the same last name. I apologize for not being able to pronounce it correctly. Maq Quinales. I've always taken pride in belonging to such a large but highly functional school district. I think it is very unfair and unfortunate to only offer virtual graduation for the class of 2020. I have two nieces graduating who beat incredible odds to get there, and they deserve their moment to shine. The recent event should not have any effect on graduation. We have enough school police to handle any unruly situations. It is also unfair that virtual graduation dates are just now being shared. There are many students and parents who are still working and need more notice. I know my nieces are not in any current yearbook, so what picture would be displayed at a virtual graduation? I am very disappointed at how things are being handled. This is not a way to have community relations. Kathy Navarro. All other school districts made the drive-through graduation work. They were very nice. Why is our district the only one not doing this? Postponing the ceremony makes no sense, as many kids will start working or going to college. The kids have expressed they are not going to care about a ceremony in September or later. Please take this into consideration to allow us to have drive-through graduations. Kimery Vargas. Please reconsider the cancellation of the traditional graduation ceremony. Jennifer Christensen. I feel all seniors in SBCUSD should get an actual graduation ceremony. I understand it will be sometime later in the future. That's fine, but they deserve to have it whenever possible. Myra Reiner. I think I could speak for many parents and students as to why just a virtual. Why not do a drive-through? We understand you keep on promising our kids will have a ceremony at a later time, but we all know this is just a way to keep us quiet for, in the meantime. Why has SB School District decided that our students don't deserve better than just a picture on a virtual platform? There has been zero communication from the school district on what we as community members could do to ensure our seniors have more than just a virtual ceremony. Drive-through was never an option to us. Now that we see how many schools in SB County have done them and have had a successful turnout, we as a community are asking for more from our board members. Socorro Diaz de Leon. I just want to say how heartbreaking it is to feel that our district is letting us down. My daughter, who is a graduate of the class of 2020 at Royal Valley High School, has been looking forward to her senior year for her whole school year. She, along with many other students, have been robbed of the ability to make memories that only a senior in high school can make. The least they can have is a ceremony that shows the effort and the appreciation from their district, not just a simple virtual graduation. It saddens me to know that other districts around us and other schools and counties have gone above and beyond for their seniors this year, and for some reason, SBCUSD seems to be not as interested in going above and beyond in the circumstances that we are in. If other district, counties, cities and schools have found a way to, for, to, for us, their seniors to walk in, grab a diploma, whether it be in a car or on a stage with only two people, SBCUSD can do so as well. There is no excuse. The students have waited years and put in so much effort to be acknowledged, and I say that our students need to be acknowledged. They deserve more, they deserve more than a virtual ceremony where their inter, where, oh, excuse me, where there is interaction acknowledgement and they feel appreciated. Monique Powell. We have to do better. 2020 seems unreal, and I understand there has always been a commitment to host a traditional ceremony at a later date. I believe setting the date sooner rather than later will be the, will be the ru, the light we need at this dark, dark time. I've seen many communities commit to a date for a traditional ceremony in the near future. Many things were, 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 were opening, and it just doesn't seem right that we can go to malls, dine in or go to beaches, yet we haven't even talked about this topic, really. Maybe we can send out another survey with many dates and options and see what we can come up with. We had a parade for the seniors last week, and it turned out amazing. Beatrice Wong. I would just like to express my thoughts on the graduation ceremony that our children, I believe, should have. Our kids have worked so hard for the past few years just to look forward to their last year in high school. Our children have been robbed of their senior activities. We, as parents, have invested money and time just to see them walk on stage to receive, to receive their diploma. Please, I know the current circumstances have put a hold on that, but most of us would love to see our children on stage graduating with family members surrounding them. Our children need to feel appreciated and celebrated for their achievements. They truly deserve their cer- ceremony. I, as a parent, agree that we can wait a little longer, but please do not cancel their cer, their ceremony. Thank you for taking the time to read. Edward Castaneda. I'm really upset with this decision. It hurts to work four years straight and not be congratulated by all of my teachers in person before I leave for college. And Helica Sanchez. Our seniors from Indian Springs deserve a graduation ceremony and, of course, with social distance and have two parents per student, student, and end it with a parade. From Kim. Why can't SBCUSD have some form of graduation for our seniors? There has been a lot of graduations all around us. I'm sure you could make a few tweaks and make it special for them. Taysha Wick. I would like to voice my concern for canceling any type of graduation virtual doesn't count. These kids have lost so much of their senior year, and many have worked hard to be successful in school. Graduation, having your name called, walking across the stage, shaking hands, receiving their diploma and having family and friends cheer for you is something that closes a chapter that every single individual should experience. They have lost prom, grad night and all senior functions. Please do not take this monumental experience away. Because they have lost so much, I ask for at a min- minimum, a drive-through graduation so they can experience what graduation feels like. Please do right by these hard-working seniors. They deserve it more than anybody, since they have had to endure such a horrible year. Thank you. Michelle Lehman. I'm the parent of a 2020 graduating graduate, feeling frustrated about the lack of efforts being made by the SBCUSD regarding graduations. I understand there are CDC guidelines that need to be followed due to the coronavirus, and it wasn't the school district's choice to close schools and put a hold on or cancel events. However, graduations are happening in other schools in the San Bernardino County example, Ucaiparancho, Fontana, Redlands, while our district is yet to conduct any other alternative besides a virtual celebration attached to a postponement. I was on board for a graduation later in the year, and I'd still like that, however the time is now. In a few short days, the school year will end. Some schools might be now. Where is this leaving these graduates? Just sitting around waiting for closure in the hopes that when the time has come to conduct their graduations, that schools have the time and passion to put one together. Let's forget, let's forget that when schools do reopen, teachers and administrators are going to have their hands full. Some seniors might not be around to attend one later. Some seniors might think what's done is done and have tried so hard to deal with this reality and have finally come to peace with graduations and have chosen to move on. While no matter what form of graduation is planned, you aren't going to please everyone. I think our schools need to watch the video of other schools conducting drive-by graduations so they can put together a nice ceremony and for now, offer these seniors a graduation celebration that they actually are a part of physically. Even if it takes place a week or two after their original graduation date, they will get the chance to feel that sense of pride for all they've accomplished, not to mention the feeling of worth, knowing their schools just didn't say they loved them, they showed them love and that they were worth the effort. The district is about making hope happen. Let's make it happen. The schools and principals need to make graduation happen now. We are not asking for anything more. We are asking to change what you already had to do and make it work. Don't sit back and watch other schools in the same county make it happen. Thank you. From Julian Rangel. We want to graduate like the other schools. It is not fair that you make us lesser than other schools that are already graduated. We deserve a regular graduation as long as we follow the required distancing and face masks. Monica Torres. I'm a parent of a Cajon High School student, the mother of my firstborn son, who will forever remember this year of his senior year to be disappointing with his end of the year stripped away from him. Myself and many other parents of our graduating class of 2020 would want more than just a virtual recognition for our seniors. We would truly appreciate all efforts to hold a traditional ceremony, ceremony for our seniors. Thank you. This one just has a last name, Rios. I believe that they should at least make them a, a car graduation. They don't deserve to have a virtual graduation. Sasha Zapata. I'm a senior from a Royal Valley High School. I am frustrated and I am disappointed. I'm not the only one who feels this way. You guys have had three months to try and come up with a different option for the class of 2020. These different options could have been a drive-through, a six-feet-apart graduation and more. We have seen many school districts around us do these kinds of graduations, and they have all worked. So why haven't we done the same? Students from the IB program at a Royal Valley have even offered to help plan this event. We shouldn't have had, we shouldn't have to do that. It isn't fair that you guys leave this until the last minute. We worked hard for 12 years, and we deserve to walk across a stage in front of our parents. Don't use the current issues going on in the world as an excuse for not trying to provide the class of 2020 with a different option. The saddest part of all is that the school board members didn't even try to think of different options and simply resorted to the easiest thing for you, a virtual graduation. Because of your current actions, I cannot trust that you can provide a graduation for us in the future. Would I like one? Absolutely. But I honestly do not believe the school board will pull through. Thank you for finally listening to us. Do better. Gabriella Vaca Gonzalez. Please address the situation of the virtual graduation. My classmates and I did not want us to have just a virtual graduation. We also want to have a drive-through graduation or an in-person graduation, just like other schools around the state. Still, oh, and the last one, Stacy Newcomer. I'm an SBCUSD employee and. I'm an S B C U S D employee and parent of a twenty twenty senior. My husband and I are also graduates of this district. My voice is for not only my child this evening, but for the other parents of a twenty twenty senior. As parents, most of us understand the difficulty this district has gone through in the last eighty days. We have watched the district come together for their community and still educate, feed and provide services to the students during an unprecedented global event. And I would like to thank you for your hard work and diligence. But I am also concerned about what is not being said about graduation. Yes, you have said that there will be a ceremony at some point, but as a parent, when we are not seeing what we when what we are not seeing or hearing, what? I'm so sorry, I'm trying to again, but as a parent, when we are not seeing or hearing what that will be is disheartening. There has been some conflicting information and this is what leads to aggravation and frustration. We are asking you to include us in your thought process. Reach out to the parents and students to get ideas. We need to come together on this. I know graduation may not be as important as the budget or other pressing issues, but it needs to be addressed at some point. It is hard to watch Ontario and Rancho and Rancho Cucamonga High Schools have drive through graduations and ask the question, why not us? Redlands High School as well. Please give our seniors the closure they deserve so that they can move on into their new chapter of life with the education you have given them. Think outside the box and make hope happen for our seniors. Remember, the students, parents and community are your most important stakeholders. Thank you. And that is all the comments.
Thank you, Karen. Dr. Volker.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank all of the the parents and students, guardians, et cetera, that took the time to to give us feedback and provide their comments this evening. Um, I want to reiterate just a couple of things. Number one, the the commitment that was originally shared in two different letters to our seniors has not changed. We did have a miscommunication. I'll address that in just a minute, but we are fully committed to having a traditional in-person type graduation when we are, when we can do so safely and when we when the the restrictions on large gatherings are lifted. Um, our primary concern there is obviously safety, but we will have that in the future. We are fully committed. We've already set the money aside for that graduation ceremony, which we'll call a traditional graduation ceremony. We've also been committed to a virtual celebration. Um, those are occurring in the next week or so. Um, they are as from production standpoint, uh, just about in the can and those will occur as well. We did send, um, and I I shared this with the board earlier, but for the public's knowledge, um, we did send out a schedule of the virtual celebrations on Monday evening. And in the messaging for that, uh, schedule, we did mistakenly use the word canceled uh, in relation to our in-person graduation ceremonies. Uh, that was a mistake on our part. We apologize for that. Uh, we corrected it, um, almost immediately. Uh, what we should have said is the in-person graduation, meaning a traditional graduation, uh, has been postponed until such time as we can do it safely. And so again, we want to apologize for that. Um, our virtual celebrations are scheduled and ready to go. And, um, we want to, we're pleased to announce this evening uh, that we've been working with our high school principals and we are going to offer drive through graduations. Um, they will occur within about the next two weeks. Um, and so we're pleased to be able to do that in response to our parents uh, and our students who have given us feedback. And so, um, I will be doing a robocall message to the families of all seniors tomorrow, reclarifying all of this information that we will have an in-person graduation, traditional graduation when we can. We will move forward with our virtual celebration and we will be doing, uh, drive through graduations for each high school. So I just wanted to clarify all of that. And again, we'll send it out through a robocall message specifically to the families of our seniors tomorrow morning. Thank you, President Rogers.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Yallow, I know you just made a comment in the in the chat. Um, did you have anything else? Otherwise, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah, no, I think Harold addressed it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify with, uh, Mr. Dr. Volker regarding the the drive through graduation. Um, is this all high schools or is this certain? Because what I was hearing, some of the parents even mentioned that there, um, even the high schools have different things going on. Uh, maybe I misunderstood. Um, so then that's, is this all high schools basically?
Ye- yes, it is, Mrs. Rosales Medina. It's all high schools.
Okay. And and the thing is that I did see Fontana Unified, so uh, Marzana was showing off this great graduation. So I know that parents and students are seeing this in social media, how other districts are doing it. So I'm glad that we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Dr. Flores?
Yes, uh, I want to thank the parents and oops, just a minute. Let me take my video. I wanted to thank the parents and the students for their comments. And, uh, we know that you've had to sacrifice a lot. And I'm really happy, Dr. Volker, that you announced that we're going to have, uh, drive through graduations. Um, in fact, I was going to recommend that we do that. And we thought we might be able to do the, you know, person to person ones more more readily, but it looks like, you know, there's still a lot of restrictions. But I think the drive through, uh, graduation is a, uh, good mediated, mediating, uh, way, um, how you say, uh, resolution for when we can have the the person to person. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Mr. Tillman. You might be on mute.
All fine. Um, I want to thank the parents and, uh, community members who's, um, sending in comments. This has just been a horrible year for the graduating class of twenty twenty. Um, there's nothing we can do to, uh, mitigate what has already occurred to the graduating class. So even though I didn't cause the virus, I still want to apologize, uh, to that class because it's been so, um, disheartening. I'm super excited about the, the drive through graduation only because I I hear the parents saying that that's what they want and that's what some of the students want. So I'm all for it. Whatever we can do to help make this be a little bit better and a little bit brighter, then that's what we'll do as a district. I heard the concern from one of the students that said that they don't believe the board is really committed to doing a real graduation. Well, I want to just assure you, once we get the green light that we can have a traditional graduation, we will do it. Uh, and and that's all going to be real clear because it's going to be with the governor or the, uh, whoever the has authority in public health gives us the green light to have a uh, gathering of that size. So as soon as we get that word, then, uh, we'll bring in the stakeholders and decide the date that we're going to have a real graduation. And and to the parents that think that time, uh, puts a damper on the excitement of graduation, I can assure you, that's not the case. I've seen, uh, graduates that had to go away to war and they come back fifty years later and they get to get their diploma and and they have tears in their eyes because of the excitement of that moment. Uh, the only thing good about this, uh, 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 virus inflicted, uh, senior year is that, uh, I don't hear anybody saying they didn't want to go to the prom and they didn't want to go to graduation. That's what we used to hear prior to, uh, it being taken away. So we really do have a much better appreciation for these, um, events. I even have a different perspective on my prom that I went to begrudgingly. I I just feel so, uh, blessed to have been able to participate in the prom and the grad night and the graduation, um, because there are some great memories. So, uh, to the graduates, I apologize. We're going to move forward. Uh, thank you, Dr. Volker. On the drive through, we still have the virtual and we're going to do a graduation. Uh, I would even like to, and when all goes away, try to find some way we can do a grad night or a prom. I want to give you guys everything. So, um, ladies and and the the men, young men and women, everything because you deserve it. You've worked hard and you've been through a whole bunch of stress, uh, during this period. And I don't want to minimize that. To the parents, the guardians, the students, the teachers, the faculty, staff, the classified employees, this has been a horrible, uh, month or two for schools. So, uh, hopefully in the near future, we'll get through this and we'll be able to do some things that will brighten up everyone's day. Thanks again for your input and for the staff's help.
Thank you all so much, um, for your your comments. Uh, Dr. Dr. Wyatt, are you? Okay.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I I just want to echo what my colleagues have said already and, um, you know, ob- obviously, communication is key. And, you know, we we live through social media so much nowadays, especially that, you know, many of us are sheltered in place and staying at home. So it is critical that when we send out a message that it's accurate. You know, and I know, um, you know, Dr. Volker and our communication staff have, uh, and then say, hey, we we screwed up on that one. So, you know, that that's a big deal for all of us because this board and I can assure you and our community, we we know this and our students and our staff are absolutely dedicated to our students and our community. We want only the best for our students and the best for our families and the best for our staff. And you know, that's what you're going to get. And I'm super excited myself. Now that we're going to have a drive through celebrations slash graduations, um, we're having a virtual celebration as well. And, uh, like all of us have said, we are still going to have our physical graduation. You know, we have not deterred from that. That has always been our goal and that's what we're going to do. Uh, I love the idea by Mr. Tillman about still having, uh, you know, even some sort of dance or senior prom if we can or graduation night. Um, you know, I know we went to some amazing, amazing graduations last year, um, for our high schools and you know, I would expect us to raise the bar and even exceed, um, the graduations that I thought were absolutely amazing last year. So our community is right, our students are right, our parents are right, our staff are right. Our kids deserve everything and this year has been like no other. So our graduation celebrations should be like no other. Now we'll leave it at that.
Dr. Flores?
Um, yes, I just wanted to comment on the person that said that Mr. Tillman, um, proposed giving annuals to all the students. It really was me. And I, I, uh, I wanted to do what Redlands, um, district did. And I did ask, uh, Dr. Volker to cost it out. And I don't remember, we haven't put it on the agenda for us to discuss it, but Dr. Volker, you do have that information, no?
I do, Dr. Flores. It's it's right at about two hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And so we would have to agendize it so that we could move on it, Madam President. So I think that would be a wonderful gift, uh, from our board to our our students. Thank you. Our graduating seniors.
All right. Thank you so much, um, and I know, yes, Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, I, and and, um, Dr. Flores was right. She was the one to propose the, uh, made a proposal for the grab book, the yearbooks. But I also want to put in a, uh, say a big thank you to Cajon High School. They gave out a swag bag with some, uh, cookies, but they had a face mask, a, a Cajon High School face mask, a a banner, a T-shirt, and that was really a great touch. And I wanted, uh, commend the high school for doing that. I only know that because I had a senior living with me, so I went to pick up his packet. So I want to thank, uh, Ms. Bishop and her team there at Cajon High School for doing a great job with, uh, making the seniors feel special with their swag bag.
Thank you so much, Board. And we know, again, you know, this is public comments and normally, you know, we don't, uh, go back and forth. But there was some information that, you know, I was very excited about wanting it to come out and I know that there was some concerns. Um, I do want to just mention, um, a student by the name of Sandy Michelle Valdez and had a chance to spend some time with her. And I know Dr. Volker followed up with her and, you know, our kids and they're advocating is just par none. And I appreciate them. And so as we looked at the drive through graduation and again, our commitment was safety and and making sure we could do what we could do. Um, you know, this is what happens when, you know, we just continue to advocate and speak with us and let us know what we can do because we love our students and we wanted to make sure that there is no way that we were overlooking you all and saying, we don't want to give you anything less than the best. And so I look forward to it. I was excited about it and just was waiting for it to all go. And so there goes my public, there goes my comments later on, but this is great. And and I know, Board, you would be excited about it as well. And so, um, but those timelines, I will say again, is very important that we get the proper information out to our, um, to to the community because we were up late yesterday trying to make some corrections last night. Dr. Wyatt and I was getting some intel and we listen to our public and we want to hear and know how we can make those corrections because right now it is a crucial time and everyone is, you know, we we're dealing with some anxieties here and there. And the less we can make those things happen, we want to do what we can. So appreciate every one of you and all your, all the viewing audience. Um, we look forward to celebrating continuously with the class of twenty twenty. We're moving now into, um, seven point zero and now we're at seven point one. Our San Bernardino Teachers Associations. Are they on the line?
Evening, President Rogers. Hello, board members. I'm Ashley Vito Salcala, president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Well, this certainly has been a year with echoes of the past, but will we rise to meet the challenge? From the pandemic of nineteen eighteen to COVID nineteen, from the economic crash of twen- two thousand eight to our pending cuts of twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. From the civil rights movement of the sixties to the Black Lives Matter movement today, we are living history. This is a time that our students will tell their grandchildren about. It's a time of stress and trauma for adults and children alike. What will be our response? Will we be prepared as a district, as a community, to embrace and support our students and our staff going forward? The only thing I know for sure is that we are in for a new normal. And in many ways, that's a good thing. We have the opportunity to create new systems, smaller class sizes, better mental and physical health supports for our students. We have many creative and out of the box thinkers in our district. This is our time to make more than hope happen. This is our time to make our hopes a reality. S B T A and C T A have long been on the forefront of social justice. We must rise to the challenge and teach our children that the content of character is more important than the color of skin. We must prepare a world for them that gives our black and brown children a safe and welcoming community in which to thrive as adults. My dear friend Toby Boyd, who is the C T A president, puts it this way. We as a society have to get past rhetoric and truly inject societal change that's inclusive to everyone. We have to do better for our students of color. As we look to the health and welfare needs brought about by COVID nineteen, we also need to look at what supports we have in place for our most vulnerable students. We know class size greatly impacts student learning. We know the teacher is the most important factor in a student's success. We know our students' learning conditions are our teachers' working conditions. We must ensure we level the playing field. Equity is making sure everyone has the tools they need to succeed, not providing everyone the same tools. So what will we do as a union, as a district, as a community? The challenges of physical distance schooling will be many. The opportunities to bring our community together are also numerous. When we look back on this year, I hope that we say we did all we could for our students and our staff, that we were not doomed to make mistakes of the past, but that we created a vision for a future that lifted every student in S B C U S D to their full potential.
Thank you. Ashley, are you still there? Ashley, you went to mute. Is it, are she, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Seven point two California School Employees Association. I think, Karen, you said there's, are there no comments tonight?
Uh, no, I'm here.
Okay. Hello.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, board members and staff and community. My name is Vanessa Messes. I am a sergeant at arms for C S E A, Chapter one eighty-three and a campus security officer for the district. I am very proud to be a part of this district, like every one of my classified brothers and sisters. Happy to have a, a job and continued support from the Board of Education and Superintendent. We, the over two thousand members, would like to thank you for continuing, continuing, for continuing to consider all of the classified members during your decision on budget cuts and your constant thought towards preventing the loss of our classified employees. We, the essential staff, have been working from home and on the sites, making sure meals are prepped and passed out, computers are up and running, answering phone calls, continuing daily tasks, attending virtual meetings, researching and coming together with managers and and administrators to figure out what next school year is going to look like, keeping up the inside and the outside of our district buildings, providing safety and security for all those who come to the campus and staff buildings, while trying to keep each other, ourselves, and our families safe, though we continue to work behind the scenes to maintain the operations of the district and address concerns and questions from parents in the community. Most of you will never know or meet most of us, but we continue to serve our district, staff, parents, students, and community every day during this wavering time. And we will remain serving those who call on us and continue our work as the backbone of the district well after. Lastly, CSEA would like to congratulate all of the 2020 seniors of our district and staff's children. Though the end of this year may not have been what you expected, know that we are very proud of you, each and every one of you, and that we're ready to have your graduation when it's your time. Congratulations, Class of 2020. Now it's your time to take on the world with bright new views, exciting new visions. Good luck, and we can't wait to see the amazing things that you will do. Thank you, Madam President and the Board, for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. And I believe it's 7.3, Communication Workers of America, that Karen has communicated with me that there are no comments. 7.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative?
Not seeing one.
I'm not seeing one, okay. All right. We are now at 8.1, Budget and Local Control Accountability Plan Update. Dr. Volkermer?
Thank you, Madam President. Board, just last Thursday, we were able, at a special board meeting, to give you a very comprehensive overview of what we were seeing in the budget, what we thought it meant to us. We shared with you the process that we were going to use moving forward and acknowledged that it's a very, very fluid situation in terms of lots of moving parts, lots of people making decisions about the budget. And so tonight, we just want to give you a quick update to keep you abreast of what's happening legislatively. And then we wanted to make sure that the questions that you asked us at our last presentation last Thursday, we wanted to make sure that we brought back the answers to your questions. And so that's what we have for you this evening, as well as some next steps we're going to take, and then get some information in terms of how you'll be involved, particularly a week from, or a week from tomorrow, I think, yeah, the 10th, in an LCAP and budget presentation that will be going on. So I'm going to turn it over to Janie. Again, I want to thank her and her team for the endless amount of effort they've put toward our budget deliberation so far this year. So thank you, Janie.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. David, go ahead and advance the slide. So as Dr. Volkermer talked about, we're going to touch briefly on what we know. As you heard last week, the Senate budget proposal came out, so we'll look at the difference between the Governor's May revise and that budget proposal. Some questions the Board raised around cash deferrals and interfund borrowing, available RDA funds, a few more questions on SERP and some next steps. Go ahead and, next slide. So this chart shows some of the major differences between the Governor's proposal and the Senate proposal, the Assembly's budget proposal. We expect to receive a few days before June 15th, but the Governor, of course, you knew, he proposed adding the COLA and then applying a deficit. The Senate proposal proposes to fund, to fund the 2.31% COLA and no deficit. Some of the special ed dollars are in the budget, but would be a little lower under the Senate's proposal. K-12 categoricals would remain at last, this year's level, and state deferrals. So they would be very similar, the 5.3 billion in deferrals statewide if federal funds do not materialize, the Senate proposal, similar to the Governor's. Under ADA, the Governor, there was no language about holding us harmless for our ADA in going into the new budget year, but the Senate proposal specifically talks about holding districts harmless at the 1920 level. And then the difference, the Governor's proposal will trigger off the cuts if we receive federal dollars, and the Senate proposal will trigger on if federal stimulus dollars do not materialize. Did you want me to wait for some questions here, President Rogers?
I'm not sure how many slides this is. Mr. Tillman, you have something on this slide?
Just clarification, in terms of money, the word harmless, so the Governor's proposal was to have a no-hold harmless for 2021. How does that differ if you do have a hold harmless in terms of the Senate proposal?
So a lot of it is that it was, it wasn't brutally clear, there was no language in there under the Governor's proposal. So for example, if next year, we have, you know, continue to have, where we have to have some school closures and our ADA was to go down, we would still get at least last year's level. And under the Governor's proposal, I, it wasn't clear, it wasn't mentioned. So that's the difference. Mr. Tillman, a little more security. Now, under the Governor's proposal, you get prior year generally ADA, but, so we just want to make sure that we have that in the language, because if your ADA goes down significantly in the budget year, it really impacts your out years.
Right. And then the 2.1, I mean, the 2.31% COLA, how much money is that?
Oh, let's see. I think it was, I'm sorry, I don't have my notes with me. I think it was 12 million. Mr. Tillman, let me get back to you on that.
But, but this is saying that if you go to the Senate proposal, you get the 12 billion dollars COLA versus the Governor's proposal, which is, what does that mean? What would the amount be with a 2.31% COLA with a 10% deficit?
The 7.92% deficit. So I think we showed at the last board meeting that the LCFF would be cut about over 50 million.
50 million? So you, so you talking about a difference of like 70 million dollars with that one lot on?
So the, I apologize, because I don't have my notes from last time when we showed you all, but if I can come back to it, Mr. Tillman?
I just want these lines to be clear to everyone what it means. This, we're talking about a lot of money and the difference between the Senate proposal and the Governor's proposal.
Yeah, so the Senate's would be similar to what we thought was going to happen, correct? We were going to get a COLA moving into the year. So yeah. So the LCFF reduction was 55.7 million.
So the Senate's proposal is saying, not only would you get that 57 million, but you'd also get the COLA on top of that?
No, that would be inclusive of the 55 million. Danny, thank you.
But they would get rid of the 55 million dollar cut?
Correct. So what it would do then is trigger further deferrals.
Right.
And, and then what happens in a year out? If the economy doesn't recover, I think it could be very devastating.
I understand.
Should we not receive funding?
I understand.
Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, Ms. Christakis, thanks. Thank you, Danny, for asking those questions. That's really clarifies. Could you please explain to the public what 5.3 billion in deferrals means?
Yes, I'm going to do that on a subsequent, subsequent slide, so we'll see if my explanation there responds to your questions.
And then what does trigger on reduces budget in the event federal stimulus dollars do not materialize? What does that mean?
So there'd be additional deferrals of over $5 billion, up to 50% of the money we get from the state, we'd have to borrow. So it's quite significant.
And that means we could borrow from our own, right, from our own?
No, it's too much. We have to borrow externally.
We would have, could we do both?
Of course, we would do that, absolutely. So the team, you know, had to do that in the past, and so the smaller deferral from June to July will do internally, but when you get to large deferrals like that, we will have to borrow money. And I have a fight on that as well.
Okay, so we need to tell our, our public, our parents, to reach out to their legislators, to their, to Congressman, whoever, whoever, I guess Congressman Aguilar is our Congressman, and our state senators. You just need to write emails to them and say that we need this federal stimulus, so otherwise we're going to go under, correct?
It will be very challenging for all school districts if we don't receive the funding. And so we wouldn't go under, but it would require some pretty significant, well, significant borrowing, and then what does the out years look like? Out years could be significant cuts.
Okay, thank you, Janie.
You're welcome. Okay, next slide. So, Dr. Flores, thanks for asking the question. For the public, this is, tries to simplify the deferral of our state dollars. This is statewide to school districts. And so it's in billions, right? So the first one proposed under the Governor's proposal is the, the June deferral gets moved to July, so they pay us. So that one is, we can do internally. Then the next deferral would be April, May, and June, and this is statewide, so you see how large that is, over, you know, $5 billion, 5.28 billion. Well, that's a significant amount of money for our district, and that's when we would have to issue to go out for a TRAN or a loan. And so the Senate's proposal would double that, another 5 billion. So that's quite significant amount of money. For our district, we're very dependent on state aid. We receive less money through property taxes than some other areas, and so we're very dependent on the state following the schedule that's aligned, that's lined out in ed code and paying school districts. But we prefer a deferral to a cut. And so we do have to pay for the borrowing and all of that, but when you go back and look at what a cut would look like of over 50 million, we prefer managing cash than being cut. Does that answer your question, Dr. Flores?
Yes, it does. Thank you. That's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, please. Oh, I think there's another question.
Yes. Yeah, so on the other slide, I think it's important. So you're saying that, that the, this, this 5.28 billion, it would be, is equivalent to 50 million dollars for us?
No. I'm sorry, Mr. Tillman.
26 million?
This, the two, the 5.28 is probably 124 million.
To us?
If, if the, if the Senate's proposal goes through and it's triggered, it would be an additional, a total amount of 273 million, because it depends on the months of when the deferrals happen, because we have specific schedules and percentages. We don't know what months the Senate proposal will be. We're going to know a lot more in the next two weeks.
But this is a substantial amount of money. He says about 100 and something million dollars?
So it's 273 million if the trigger is pulled, right, and we don't get any federal funding. Under this, under this model, it's 124 million, that 5.28. So, you know, it's manageable. This is under the Governor's proposal. We would have to do borrowing. As you know, Mr. Tillman, the borrowing, you go in with other school districts, and the cost of borrowing is much cheaper, but it is, still, the cost is, is put on school districts versus the state. It's kind of like the state using a credit card. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I wouldn't say it's like the state using a credit card, because the credit card, I get like 16, 17%, and this money's like 1%, right?
Well, it's a lower percentage, but there's a cost to borrow. So we will look for the most cost-effective way to do this.
And, and it would help too, if we could quantify that cost to borrow in a percentage, because then everybody can understand.
Yeah, so we will be working on that over the next couple of weeks. We tried to pull the last one, but it was so long ago that it's, it's in storage, and with this remote working, we weren't able to access the records.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because it doesn't always come out that way, but this is way better than the proposal that the Governor proposed for May revise. This is difference in night, night and day in terms of cut. But I understand what your concern is in terms of the out years, Ms. Christakis, but if they're going to allow us to have the money to spend, then I think we suspend it, knowing that we're going to prepare for, you know, we don't know what their next step is going to be in the next year or the out years.
Yeah, it gives us more time to prepare, which is really, really important. This short timeline we've had has just been very, very challenging. So it gives us more time for thoughtful, you know, just thoughts around how we align our budget.
Right.
And so we'll see what happens when the Governor gets all the information by January, June 15th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, and just, you kind of said it. The caution is that in the out years, it's going to be even more significant than if you did it in this subsequent year, so.
We have to do both.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, recommend, that we kind of consider doing both, you know, and tighten our belts along the way here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, it's just a recommendation, Janie. In terms of the infographics, I, I think it would be really good to show what Danny was saying in terms of the actual amount of what is the 5.28 billion impact on us of 120 million, but then how we would, you know, borrow, right? Borrow in, in terms of the, the rate and how much, and, and, and then plan it out so people can see. And then that way, that way, you know, we could visually see what Mike is saying in terms of the costs and predict what, what's, what's going to come ahead. But the, I mean, I like the, I like these infographics, they're very, very powerful, and people can see it, but we got to break it down even more, I think.
Yeah, as soon as we have what the final will be, we'll put that all together for you. And part of, I, I think what Mr. Gallo was saying is, if the federal dollars don't keep coming every year, the state's not going to be able to sustain this type of proposal, and there could be some pretty big cuts to education, depending on the trajectory of the coronavirus, right? And when things get back to normal and how quickly the economy will be out.
Right.
Thank you.
All the factors, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So some questions came up last time about borrowing. I did, the team put together a B C that gives a lot more information for you to, to look at. We are going to look at both scenarios, both the Governor and the Senate scenario. We know that the June to July, we will do with interfund borrowing, but as we get to next year, we tend, we have different options. In the past, we worked with our county superintendent of schools that worked with the county treasurer. We can also go out for a trans on our own, because we're large enough, but generally, you want to share that cost with other districts. And so once we know exactly what's going to happen, the team will be looking at cash every day, because you can never, ever run out of cash. Cash is king. It's different than budget, and so we will be prepared and we will get all those costs together for the Board. Next slide. I think in Mr. Gallo, you asked how much money we had available in our RDA funds. So our projected revenue for the current year outside of LCFF is the about 5.0, almost 7 million. Our COP payments, 5.1, it leaves a little for other projects. As you'll recall, we presented a whole facility plan to you where we're going to use some of those extra funds to help fund some of the projects we didn't have money for. We do have 5 million set aside for a future COP payment. Should anything, our RDA be impacted by the loss of commercial tax revenue and other things that are happening in the economy? So that's the response to the question about RDA. And next slide. Dr. Flores, you asked a couple times about SERP. So So generally, the plan is only cost effective when it generates additional retirements beyond the normal attrition. And the positions are not replaced. So let's say that a district had a drastic drop in enrollment. That through the normal attrition, they couldn't achieve. Um, that's when something like this can, um, help generate dollars. There is some savings when you hire someone new and they make less than the person they're replacing. But when you're paying the person that left, extra money, you know, through a SERP. That salary savings is less. And then as the current employee advances on the salary schedule over time, because we pay on a SERP usually over four or five years. Then the savings is less and less. So generally, it works when you're not replacing positions. And you have more than what you would normally have in retirement. There's still a teacher shortage out there, uh, nationwide, wide teacher shortage. And so we're not trying to get rid of, uh, folks. Except to align through our declining enrollment and staffing ratios. Um, these plans have to comply with I R S, uh, structured as a qualified four oh one plan. And generally, you offer it ahead of time so that it aligns with some of the retirements. And you've identified that you need excess of your normal attrition. And then the savings occurs the following budget year.
You know, uh, Madam President, I forgot to type in, but I know that we did it one year. We were gonna lay off two hundred and fifty two, we did lay off two hundred and fifty two teachers. But I don't remember how many, uh, we did, um, we did give an incentive. And because we got the amount of, of teachers to retire. Uh, they, uh, we were able to bring back all two hundred and fifty two teachers. So, uh, I mean, we would possibly use some, I understand all the rationale you're giving. Uh, however, I think it should, still should be an option. Uh, i- i- in terms of, uh, if we ever get into a crunch where we have to give pink slips out.
Yes, Mr. Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide.
Mr. Tillman, did you have a question on this slide?
I just wanted to reiterate, um, Dr. Flores made the, uh, the, the key statement that she made was, um. We avoided layoffs. We're, we're not in that situation right now. Actually, we want to maintain the students. But I'll give you a perfect example. Say for instance, if we ended up going with the governor.
At any time, we would use it. Yeah, all right.
So.
Go ahead, Mr. Tillman.
If we, if we went with the governors, it, it's if, if something happened and we went closer to the governor's, uh. Estimate, then you would have to start finding crazy ways of saving money, includes, including increasing class sizes. So something like that, where it gets you to a point where you wouldn't need as many, um, teachers, only because you couldn't afford them. So at that point, you might want to look at doing a SERP into next year, going into the, into the next year. But right now, we, we don't, we don't, we don't see where we're gonna, uh, not need the same level of teachers. So you wouldn't do a SERP right now. And if there is a, there is a, a teacher shortage at the current level. So we don't want to do anything to incentivize teachers leaving at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Christakis, go ahead.
Yeah, so next steps, um, the, also, there were questions around the site technology. And so there, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. When will devices be coming back? So the team's working on addressing the site technology needs. That will be an ongoing dialogue as we go into next year. You know, there's a lot of things that we're not, we don't know what is gonna happen exactly. So we will, um, at the June sixteenth board meeting, provide the information that we have to date. As well as a spending plan for the gear and the coronavirus relief fund. Just knowing that we have to be really flexible and that things are changing. And so we're just, you know, trying to really, uh, do our best to plan ahead, but being very flexible that things could change. There will, we'll be providing reopening school recommendations at the next board, at the June sixteenth board meeting. And continuing to engage our stakeholders and gather input around L cap. You know, that, um, that deadline for L cap has been pushed back to December. So that gives us time to continue to listen to our stakeholders. And the next, um, slide, and then just the upcoming board and L cap meetings. So next, June tenth is the L cap, um, budget meeting scheduled as a board meeting from ten A M. to twelve. The June sixteenth workshop, board workshop, and then the twenty third is our public hearing. And June thirtieth, our budget, um, and L cap report approval. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you, um, for your presentation, and I am looking to see if there's any other comments. I'm not seeing any. And on the, I know on the last slide, it lists the dates, and I guess the times will also be going out soon. Dr. Volkmer?
Yes, um, uh, Madam President, the invitations for the, um. The, 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 um, general invitation for the June tenth meeting. Um, I believe has already gone out. It was scheduled to go out Monday afternoon. I believe that's already out. What we do need from the board, uh, is to know, and if you could let Karen know, how many board members we're gonna be at, have at June, the June tenth meeting? We are planning on having you actually lead that meeting. Um, we have a budget subcommittee, um, that we're, uh, and, and whoever else is there. Uh, we want to rely on you to, you have said that you want to, uh, be in, very involved in the leadership of this process. And so we are designing a very interactive process for the community, and we want the board to be, uh, involved in that and leading that. So we will need to know, um, which of you will be coming to the June tenth meeting. If you could just let Karen know, that would be great.
Harold, may I add? So, so Boris, you let Karen know as early as tomorrow. And my team will be reaching out with you, to you to schedule a meeting prior to June tenth. To share with you the documents and process that we intend on using. And having you lead a discussion with the community and some, and some, some data and input gathering from the community led by you all. And so we've developed a process and a meeting agenda that we think, uh, will meet the needs, uh, of our community. Particularly given a, a virtual environment, which makes it a little bit more challenging. And so we've, we're experimenting with some different, um, some different technology platforms. That, that would be more useful and beneficial, um, to get the kind of engagement that we think is necessary. And authentic and meaningful for participants. And so we'd want to meet with the board subcommittee prior to the tenth. I'll have some, uh, some dates and times and, and that will meet with, that will work with your schedules. So that way we can talk, walk you through the docs, walk you through the deck, walk you through our objectives. And then, um, would ask that you take, uh, leadership at various points in the meeting. So sooner the better, it'd be great. Thank you, Boris.
Great.
Hey, Karen, I'm gonna attend. I'm gonna be kind of busy over the next time, so I, I don't know if I'll get a chance to tell you by tomorrow. So I'll just let you know right now.
I've got it. Thank you.
Got your mind. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Thanks, Karen.
Dr. Flores, did you, or Dr. Dr. Hill, you are down with a comment?
I am, thank you. I, uh, Jane, I just want to thank you for the great presentation. I took some, uh, really good notes. And whereas last, um, week when you made your presentation, I think I had to, uh, go get the title now. But I feel a lot better this time. So I just want, I just appreciate all the updates and it's looking, um, uh, better and better. And of course, we still haven't met our deadline for filing taxes. So, uh, if Mike pays all that, uh, Ellis Bay, so that a million dollars there, we're gonna be in good shape.
Right, all right.
But I don't have any question, but I do appreciate the presentation. And I, I really like the way it's laid out in, in a layman's, uh, fashion, so that it's easy to understand. I have to tell you, I haven't always understood, uh, uh, the budget to the point of not having to say at the end. Now, now where are we? But I think I'm right in saying, we still have a problem. But it's certainly not one that is, um, as bad as it looked last time. And hopefully each time you make a presentation, we realize more savings. Because it, it is important, and we know it's, we know it's the new normal. But, um, you know, even that, we still need our wonderful people who are doing a good job. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Um, Dr. Flores? Yes, uh, thank you, Janie and your team, um. And I assume that you'll have other updates, uh, as we get the carryover. And all the different aspects that we also asked you about the facility funds and et cetera. But I also, uh, Dr. Volkmer, um, uh, all these budget meetings. I think I recall that the board all wants to participate. So I, I think we should just say that it's a board meeting, uh, so that, so that we put out the agenda to everybody. This is a public forum and the board, uh, just a reminder that, uh, Madam President. That we all wanted to participate if we could. And I, I think that that's would be prudent, uh, so that it's all public and we publicize it to everyone. Uh, so they have input as well and also can raise questions. So, uh, that's what I recommend. Uh, thank you. And I thought we had mentioned that. I saw one that said public, but not the others. But I think the consistency is that we wanted to be transparent and everyone. We also wanted to be part of it as a board and that we should be, uh, so. So it should be a, a formal board meeting. Yeah, so we, so whatever will make it where we all can be there is what we're saying. Dr. Mitchell, I think you're listening in on that.
It is being scheduled as a board meeting, um, and then there are specific activities.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're talking about.
Yeah, so, so it is being scheduled as a board meeting and being publicly announced. But there are particular activities that we're planning into engaging the community.
You're gonna be the, you're gonna be the spokesperson for the L cap or Dr. Volkmer or Janie?
I, I oversee L cap, Dr. Flores, and so yeah.
But in the other ones, it'll be, I think, uh, Dr. Volkmer and, and Ms. Christakis, correct?
But just, just to clarify, Dr. Flores.
Right.
Uh, June tenth is, is a, is a community meeting that we're turning into a board meeting. Because all the board members want to be involved.
Correct.
For that, you have June sixteenth, June twenty third and June thirtieth, that are board me, actual board meetings.
Great, okay, great. I just wanted to clarify, to make sure that that, that's. Okay, and there's some facilitation. You are speaking to Dr. Mitchell, correct?
June tenth was already established as an L cap community meeting as a follow up to our May one, as a follow up to our April one. This is our third meeting since the closure. Um, given the board's recent, um, conversations, we turned it in, into a meeting so that all could attend. But it is primarily an L cap, uh, input gathering session. And we're also planning on sharing some major aspects of the budget. And there are some facilitation that we would like board members to.
Correct, okay.
While all board members are particip, are, are present and are leading like a board ma, meeting.
Got it. Mr. Tillman? Be attending as well. Karen, I will be there. Okay, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, uh, and, and I just want to touch on the, the, um, the budget process in general. You know, at the last meeting, uh, Madam President, uh, you know, I had a real concern about doing the presentation. And in that presentation, and the reason why I had a concern, because it was ninety seven million dollar worth of cuts. And I've been around long enough to know that when you start talking about cuts, people start seeing their sales in those cuts. And then people have anxiety and panic. And I, uh, I know, I know, I got a great feeling that it's not gonna be that bad. It's gonna be a whole lot better than that. So my whole, I, 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 I'm, I was fine with saying we're gonna prepare for the worst. But I know when you do that, you really do, uh, scare a lot of people. So I was trying to avoid scaring a lot of people. But we did scare a lot of people, and I want to, uh, just backtrack. Because I, I mentioned, uh, our T S S P, uh, modules. Where we use extra money to target the lower performing schools in our district. And so some of that i- is associated with people. But when I talked about, uh, the worst case scenario in terms of the government's proposal. Even then, my thought was, we, we would take people that were assigned to those sites. And move them back to other positions within the district. I was never talking about laying off the people associated with T S S P. So I just want to make sure that, um, the employees understand. I was never talking about laying them off, but what's even better now is, uh, if, if we get closer to the Senate's proposal. Then, um, we won't have to make any of the large cuts that we're talking about and be able to continue doing the work that we're gonna be doing. And I do want to say this, this is critical. It's the, it's the state, Assembly, Senate and the governor. That dictate how much schools get to spend from year to year. We as a district can never predict how they're gonna fund the, the year after that. I, I, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, Ms. Christakis wanting to, uh, hedge her bet and, and prepare for the worst. But in the end, you, you never know how they're gonna meet that goal. Uh, a, a good example would be, after this next presidential election, you don't know who's gonna be in there. But whoever the president is, they may decide to give more federal money to shore up areas of concern, uh, at the local level. So, uh, we've seen in the past where sometimes your, uh, your, your school, uh, budget. Uh, is positively impacted even from the federal input. Yeah, you don't, you don't know what's gonna happen when the coronavirus is over, how fast the economy is gonna be back. So you can never really predict the future. But I think we have to live with, um, the philosophy that this year's money is for this year's kids. And, uh, what I would hate to see happen is in a, uh, because of panic, that we end up hoarding a whole bunch of money. And, and getting rid of a lot of positions and programs that we don't have to. But it'll be clear on, much clearer on June the fifteenth. And, and I love the way we have a, uh, calendar, Ms. Christakis, because we wait all the way to the thirtieth. And we'll have all the information at hand to make the best decision possible. So I, uh, commend you on that calendar. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, again for that clarification. I think we just decided, you know, in the last meeting, we did put everything out there. So we know what's out there and then we're working our way through, hopeful that it's not gonna be as bad as it looks as of now. So if there are no other comments, I think I got everyone's comment. Thank you again, Ms. Christakis, for that report. We appreciate it. We are now at item nine point one, board member comments. All right, so we will start with Dr. Hill. I see you, my screen.
Thank you, Madam President. I, um. I, I just have a couple of things to say, and I just want to start off by saying congratulations to our school board members. We're proud of you and appreciate your accolades to us, but we learn from you as well. And to all of the twenty twenty graduates. And, you know, we, we, we do have to take a look at what has happened yesterday and today. And, and probably will continue through tomorrow. But we still have to take time to say thanks and be appreciative that we are here to deal with these challenges. So I, again, I want to say to all the graduates, as we talk about the graduation activities and activities you've missed. You know, as board members, we, we cannot walk in your shoes. We did years ago and it was fine. But, uh, we know you weren't walking in your own shoes, and there's nothing wrong with those expectations. So I just want you to be assured, whatever you read on Facebook, whatever the telephone call you receive. Uh, whatever, uh, Instagram you looked at, uh, email you got or what have you. Just want you to be assured that we do care about every one of you, because you have earned, you've earned a lot. And we are going to celebrate you, uh, with the virtual, with the traditional, with the, uh, uh, car drive by. Whatever we do, it won't be enough, because we know this has been hard on you. And we just want you to keep the faith and understand, we do care about you. We are not trying to hide anything from you. Um, we, we, we are going to celebrate you, probably not as much as we could. But we can celebrate you as, as we can. So just want you to hang in there and know we appreciate you. You did a good job. And, uh, uh, don't lose faith in us, in us now, because you are the reason we are here. So thank you and just wish all of you the very best. And parents, grandparents, caregivers and neighbors, thank you. You've been a blessing. And we certainly honor you every day, because you were there, you're supporting our youth. And, and you are so appreciated with all that you are doing. So again, I can't say thank you enough. And again, congratulations, class of twenty. And again, congratulations, class of 2020, endemic and not. You, you, you are going to be celebrated in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the graduates. I know has been like, Dr. Hill has mentioned the struggle. When you look at the COVID, when you look at the, the demonstrations that are going on and the positive movement with regards to making sure people understand that, you know, we need change. We need change. It's not just the health-wise, but it's also systemic change, racial, racial biases. And then really looking at how we can improve systems, not just a, at the city level, county level, but also, you know, possibly looking at the, at the district level and what we can do to help improve. So I know for a fact that there were positive protesters, positive demonstrations, so. And then we see how there is in those circumstances, things can go awry. But I do want to say thank you to all those that are making their voices heard. I know there's students organizing for tomorrow as well. These are opportunities for them to know how to make sure that their voices are heard. So congratulations to all the youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to tell folks, I don't know if you knew, but they kind of had a mini drive-by graduation at Cajon on North Park Avenue last Friday night. And I attended and had, I mean, there had to be, I'd have to say 300 cars that went up and down North Park Boulevard with people lining the streets. It's right by my house and stuff. And people holding up signs and congratulating our graduates. And it's hanging out of trucks and cars and all kinds of, it was, it was really great. You could tell the kids where our, our students were very, you know, just happy. They, they really liked that folks were lining the streets and beyond their families. And so I think the drive-by graduation is gonna be really a fun thing to do. I think it's, I think it's gonna be great. And we need to be out there cheering them on and supporting them. I'll be there at everyone that I can, as long as you don't hold them at the same time. But that'll be really a lot of fun. And, you know, regarding the protests and stuff, I might have a, a recommendation for some of the organizers that you might consider ending them prior to dark. Because it seems like when dark happens, it goes from a peaceful, you know, you know, protest of, and, and the expression of our, you know, First Amendment rights to, to stop other than, you know, than, than honorable. And, and so I think it's a good way to separate the folks who are actually out there protesting and again, expressing their, their First Amendment rights from those that, you know, just have other intentions to do ridiculous things that we saw on television. And, and they're different. And people, you know, are legitimately concerned about this. And, you know, I'd be out there right with you. And, you know, I served in the United States military to defend your right to get out and protest and go anywhere and be anywhere you want to, you know. But, you know, just you've seen what happens across the country and, and that the message, the message gets clouded with other people who have evil intents. So that'd be just my recommendation, conduct it during daytime, you know. And, and we could probably get a whole lot more participation as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. And I believe in San Bernardino, they also have set a curfew as well. Mr., where are we at? Oh, Dr. Flores, I see you in front of me. There you are.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to share about three things and I have some slides. And I have intel because of a Royal Valley High School. And the teachers honored every senior and went to their houses with these baskets and a sign. Can you go to the next, the next slide? You can see the, you can see the baskets and go to the next one. And here are the signs that everyone got, 2020 senior. And they went to every single senior's house, faculty. There's Mr. Valenzuela and they all shared in distributing the, the baskets. So I think that was really spectacular. And they got, how would you say, they got, the kids got to pick gift, gift cards. And it, it was a really special thing that they did for them. They had a royal mask, you know, a mask that had a royal on it. And they got lots of really cool things. And so they made their, you know, their, their graduation special. And now that we're gonna have drive-through graduation, it'll be even more special at all of our high schools. And I'm really glad that we're able to do that for our families and our kids and, and so forth. And I have to tell the kids and the parents, I, you know, I went to high, I went to college in the Bay Area in the 60s, in the late 60s. So I, I peacefully protested and I knew my First Amendment rights. And like Mr. Gallo said, you know, we, we have that privilege. We have that right in our country. And, and as long as, you know, you know, you can voice your, your concerns and, and, and we're, and not just concerns, but, you know, throughout the country, we're voicing for change, a, a brutal, of brutal practices, you know, against black and Latino, men and women. And, you know, all of that has to stop. And so anyway, and the other thing, there's two other things. I, I would like, Madam President, to put our agenda revision to our voter registration resolution. I don't know when, we can do that. But ICUC students have, are going to submit to us, to our board policy. And I'll have them send it to you and, and me, I guess, so that we can look at it. They just want to be more detailed so that we can, right now they can register, but they want to be able to, you know, say more than register. They want to tell them why, why it's important and more details regarding that. So that's second. Number two, I read a lot. And, you know, today, I don't know if it was the San Diego Tribune or the Los Angeles Times, but the City Council, the San Diego City Council revoked the carotid restraint, the knee to the, to the carotid to the neck. Their officers can no longer use that restraint. And I'm glad to know that it has been banned and our officers do not do that. But I really would like for all our public to know that. And also the protocols that are safe, arrest protocols, Madam President. I like, I think we need to be transparent and make that visible so that, you know, we do not cross that line. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Dr. Flores, I just want to add, and I'm glad that you brought that up, is, is also making sure that when, when there's issues going around in the city, I see our school police officers as community-based type of officers and I have so much respect for them. So for me, it's also making sure when there's issues going around the city, I really want to have a conversation before anything of how they're gonna be involved, what kind of involvement it's gonna be, and for us to decide that conversation beforehand, so.
Well, we really want to commend our officers for being present because they do take care of our city and us and protect us. And that is one of the fundamental, fundamental, you know, responsibilities of our safety and, and, and their responsibility. So I, I just want to commend them because they were on, they were, you know, protecting us the last two or three nights. So I just want to thank them very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tillman, are you there?
I am here. And, you know, it, it really is, I think, ironic that we're at the moment that we're in. And I really think there's a disconnect, you know. I heard Mr. Luna, Sergio Luna, read a letter about wanting to get rid of the school police. And, and I, and I read an article on Huffington Post and there's a movement going on where a lot of districts are defunding school police and school resource officers. Now, in our district, when we found out that our school police were given citations that turned into misdemeanors and felonies of our kids, we made sure, we said that we were gonna not have our kids get any citations that a school district without a school police department would get. Because we didn't want to buy, feed into the school, the prison pipeline. But I, I will say this, whether you have a school police department or not, things are gonna happen at your sites where the police are gonna be called. And what we have by having our own school police department is a, a department that belongs to us. And I, I hope everybody understands one thing. The tone gets set for policing by the top of the organization. In this case, it's the Board of Education Superintendent and the Chief of Police. I can tell you, that's totally different than the tone that's being set at the city level. I know Mayor Valdivia, he and I are totally different in terms of how we would approach and encourage policing to be done. And trust me, if you entrust your students with us, you would rather have my approach than Mr. Valdivia. When we were running for office and we were interviewed by the Police Association and I told a story about having a felony stop and how adversity, the city used to do a thing called Operation Safe Streets. And they would just flood the city with police. Because, and a lot of people, I, I looked like a criminal. Every time they did it, I got stopped. Now to the average layman, they say, well, it's no big deal because the thought was if you put out a, a taillight, if you, if you stop somebody for a taillight, then you're getting rid of a criminal. I'm not a criminal. I wasn't a criminal then. But when, every stop to me was life and death. And to a person who's never been through that, you will never understand that. I never forget, I had a felony stop, they had a shotgun on me, five pistols. And I had been getting stopped so much that the elected treasurer attached to Tom O'Donnell had given me a badge and deputized me so that when I got stopped by the police and I opened up and put on my license, that they would see the badge. And usually that worked, they would let me go. But this one time, they pulled me, I was, I got home from work, took, took off my, my, my tie, put on a t-shirt, was driving on the street. Policeman got behind me, he followed me on the block. I said, I'm gonna turn on this street. If he turns behind me, I'm gonna pull over. Sure enough, he pulled me over. And what I didn't realize was it was, it was a felony stop. And they had shotguns and pistols on me. And after it happened, Larry Nyga was a sergeant for the police department. And we had a board meeting and I told him, and he laughed. He said, oh Danny, we go through that kind of stuff all the time in training. No, you don't. When I'm out there on the streets and there's a shotgun and five pistols on me, and this is for real, they don't know me and I don't know them. And, 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 and they, and, and after it was all said and done with, they said I fit the description of somebody who had robbed Smart and Final earlier, which was the craziest thing in the world. I was in a Jaguar and a, 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 a brand new Jaguar going to the store. But my, but my, my point is this, the, the, the organization sets the tone. And I feel a whole lot better when a site has to call police that they're calling a police department that's under our school board, our superintendent and our chief polimo. Because they've gotten the message that they're here to protect the safety of our students. And if you watch any of our board members and listen to all our board members, they know what that concern is and, and, and they're gonna value the lives of our students. And the reason why they're gonna do that is because of the questions like Dr. Flores asked today. She made the point to say, we want to make sure certain actions aren't taking place in our school police because we want our students to be as safe as possible. They're not asking those questions at the city police level. And I say it only because I love being able to tell people, I told you so. If you ever get rid of our school police, you will lose total control of how your students are policed. And when the bad things happen, you have only yourself to blame. Because the school will no longer be in control of that policing agency that's gonna interact with our students. So I, I say it to say that it's, it's just a critical time right now. And if you look, look at what happened in Minneapolis, they just had turnover of the police chief and all that. In all these cities where you see it, there was a vacuum in leadership. Or the culture is there that allows it. And we as a society have a long way to go. I'm not gonna try to convince anybody of, to change their mind about how they think or put in my shoes, because you can't. The, we, the truth of the matter is this. I thought when people got stopped by the, by the police, it's because they were criminals. I didn't change my mind until about the seventh time I got stopped. And I realized, hell, I, I'm not doing anything and I keep getting stopped. I, when I went to Cal Poly Promona, my first week at Cal Poly Promona, I was at a stop sign, there was a school police, the, the, the campus security police at a stop sign. When I turned to, we were both at the stop sign, I turned right, he put the lights on me, asked for my ID, asked for my student ID, my school ID. And when I asked him why he, he stopped me, he said because he had never seen me at the school before. This is the first week of school, 25,000 students.
That's right.
And I pulled over on the side of the road, giving him my ID because he said he never seen me there before. It's crazy. And, and, and I, and, and for the life of me, it was confusing to me because I, I, I'm one of the scariest people in the whole world. But to, to certain people, I look like a criminal. And it's, and it's, and it's scary to walk in those shoes. And if you, and, and you, you, you will never understand it if you've never lived it. And I've lived it. So I understand all this that's going on. I understand the, the anger. I understand the emotion in, in, involved. Because for every person that's been video, that got killed on video, there's many others that died the same way and the video camera was not there. And when they went back and wrote the report, they wrote the report the same way they wrote it for this gentleman. They told some story that was totally contrary to reality. And that's what we're dealing with in America. And I wish there was some committee that met on a regular basis that would look at this issue. You know, Dr. Hill sits on a gang and drug task force. And I think it's great because gangs do bad things. And every, every month they meet to determine how they're gonna deal with this problem. Dr. Hill, you are very influential. You should start a task force to make sure we're looking at the, the, the police to find those very few that are causing the problems in these organizations. And we should have the discussion. And the reason why I said that? Because the, the, one of the times I had a problem with a bad police officer, he had pulled over my nephew, I went out there, he wrote me a ticket, we went to court, he lied about it. When I talked to my friend who was a, a reserve and I told him the name of that police officer, he started laughing. And he told me, oh yeah, yeah, he's a hothead, he crazy. Those type of cops shouldn't exist.
That's right.
If you know who they are, there should be some folks talking and saying, we can't have those people policing our community. That, if we ever get to the point where that happens, that's what's gonna make the difference. Sorry to ramble, but it was just on my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
By congratulating the San Bernardino Stateified School District Class of 2020, tell those students I'm proud of them. You have to ignore all this that's going around you. There is still so much potential for your future and you all are going to do great. For those of you who are out there protesting, be careful. And remember something, if you do something where you're arrested, that criminal record will stay with you for the rest of your life. So do not minimize what you're doing at this point in your life. Be careful and value your status in terms of not having a criminal record. And with that, I, I just want to again say congratulations to the Class of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Dr. Wyatt?
Dr. Wyatt? And you're muted. There you go.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Danny actually covered all of my comments in those 23 minutes right there. But just kidding, Danny. First of all, I wanna um, I wanna thank the the person that had the public comments who actually acknowledged, you know, the Asian Pacific Islander Month that this is and the celebration that we had for that. And maybe that we could do a little bit more for our Asian Pacific Islander community. And I've asked the question two times now, and I still haven't got the answer. And no, I I'm really proud of being of Asian Pacific Islander descent. And I've wondered, am I the first board member to ever be elected that is of Asian Pacific descent in our city and our community? Because I think that's pretty important. So, you know, thank you to the individual that brought that up. I also want to congratulate our our school district for earning the first place in the first ever Countywide Vision Challenge on the video challenge and on the vision to succeed. And maybe Dr. Volkermer or Dr. Mitchell or whomever was in charge of that could talk a little bit about that more when we get to superintendent comments. But great job to our district for placing and first in the county. And that was against all other districts in our county. So once again, Samuel City Unified School District has risen to the challenge and beat out the competition throughout the county. I want to say thank you to all of our retirees. I know normally we would celebrate all of you, you know, one at our Monty event and then also at our special board meeting. And now we apologize that we weren't able to celebrate you or acknowledge you the way we'd like. We know there's probably literally hundreds of folks retiring this year. And we we want to thank you and congratulate you on on a wonderful career and spending your time with us at Samuel City. And then also wishing you the best in your future endeavors and and for retirement as well. Like so many of our our board members have said already, thank you to all of our peaceful protesters that have been out there that are are fighting to fight. And we don't want you to give that up. And you know, we want you to be careful out there. And obviously, it means everything to us to make things right for our community and and obviously for our children and our grandchildren. And also, you know, of course, thank you to our our school police officers that were out there, you know, protecting our our community and protecting us. I know for all of us, it was a pretty scary night. For those that haven't been involved in something like that, it it could get pretty tense. And just reading, you know, comments on social media and getting text messages from our friends and family. We know, you know, how scary it was out there. And we know that you're also away from your homes and your families. So so thank you again. You know, both to our peaceful protesters and to our law enforcement are doing the right thing for our community and definitely utilizing community community policing, which I think our our school police does an absolutely amazing job doing by working with our community. You know, I also want to talk about the diversity of our school police department. I think it's important that we acknowledge that and that, you know, when you look at departments that they they emulate and they look like our our community and they have kids and, you know, adults, obviously, when they go into law enforcement that are from our community. And and I know we do that right here in Samuel City Unified School District. Danny, you might want to know that both Gwen and I are on the Gangs of Drugs Task Force as well. I'm actually the chair and Gwen's the vice chair. And I want to, huh?
I did not know that.
I know you didn't. But you know why? Because of Dr. Margaret Hill, you know, and and of course, her greatness and her being our role model and and bringing us into such committees and task force to work and and be a part of something. When we talk about collective impact, something so great to to combat gangs, combat drugs and, you know, injustices as well in our community. And trust me, I know what we're talking about, what our folks are protesting about out there will be a huge topic within the Gangs and Drugs Task Force and how we can, you know, work with our law enforcement partners and our community partners on on making things right. So, yeah, we're we're very fortunate to be on that. And again, it's thanks to folks like Dr. Margaret Hill. And, you know, she was one of many that brought us on board. And we brought Gwen on board, and we're bringing others on board to, again, make a difference in our community. So congratulations once again to our graduates. I don't think we could say that enough times right now. And we will celebrate you, obviously, in many ways now, which is very exciting. I'm looking forward to all of them, the virtual, the drive through, and definitely the in-person graduation. So congratulations again, Class of 2020. And congratulations and thank you to our staff and our families as well. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Gallo, did you have something you wanted to add?
You know, I just wanted to give a brief comment on the community policing approach to things. When you've embedded a community police department into your community, you distribute them locally among residents, et cetera. They live in your community, they work in your community, and their primary task is developing relationships with with your city residents. You see a whole different approach even nationwide. You've seen it in Flint, Michigan, where the sheriff's, the sheriff there was with the protesters, walking hand in hand, without his helmet on, in full dress uniform, supporting them. They knew him. They, it wasn't the first time that he ever became, you know, affiliated with with residents and came out there to know. That's really an important thing to do. So I know that, you know, our school police has moved towards that model. I'd like to see it even embraced further, where we actually distribute officers out, perhaps even base them at various schools. And they have a neighborhood that they're actually responsible for for walking and meeting people, et cetera. And so I I think, as Danny pointed out, we can do better. And and many of you pointed out, we can do better. And and we are doing better at San Bernardino City Unified School District. And I'd sure love to see the city pick this up too with this type of community policing approach, because it works. Okay, this is not a new concept. It works. When you know your neighbors and know people, you're less likely to, you know, to to wish to hard do the mar. And it's, you know, our police department, remember, sees people usually at their worst and in times of crisis. And so it's a very heightened situation for both our police officers and the individuals that happen to be, you know, the the, you know, result of police presence. So I think this is an important topic. I think it's one that we should really be focused on and how we can actually implement community policing strategies even further. Thank you.
Thank you. As well.
Thank you. And then just take a minute. I just wanted to first share with Mr. Tillman, thanks and Dr. Wyatt for the accolades. And Ms. Tillman, I remember your incident, I remember it in the newspaper and everything. But, you know, since then, I think we all have an obligation to take a look at the whole city. So in addition to being on the Gangs and Drugs Task Force with Gwen and Scott, I, Gwen and I also serve with the San Bernardino City Police African American Advisory Board. So we're always talking about things going on in the community, trying to build those relationships. And I also serve on the Police Foundation Board. And I know the things they do with youth court and support the trips to the mountains and whatnot. And I know our school police involved in a lot of those activities. And if we could just take a little further, I also serve on the San Bernardino County Sheriff Citizens Exchange Committee. So the thing is, we just have to be aware of everybody and all of our contacts and how we can do things. So I'm hoping with that and with our school police, Joe is out there. And I know there's people out there with explores and everybody. But we'll continue working together, because the most important thing we can do is not only get our kids through school, but hopefully get them through life without being shot on the street or treated like an animal or things of that nature. So we still got a big job to do, but we need more help. So I want to share, Danny, thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. And again, you know, we'll go back to our our minimum comments next time, because I think this was very appropriate as we have been just in the community and having these same types of conversations during this time. And so for all of your comments are certainly appreciated. And so much so that I know one of the reasons why that that also, you know, brought me to this board was that we kind of had what I called a three-pronged approach. Is that we we knew what we needed to do and continue to do in education, but we wanted to also connect that to our city and to our county. And today, I had the opportunity to be over at the Board of Supervisors when they spoke and groups and individuals came out and spoke to them about creating a resolution around racism and declaring it, you know, it as a public health crisis. But throughout this week, I've also been, you know, thinking about things always that we can do better in education or revisit things that we may have in place. And I'm not sure, and I did reach out to Dr. Volkermer, and they're gonna look into. I don't know what type of a policy that we have around racism or social justice and racial, you know, concerns. And if we don't have that, that is definitely something that, you know, we do, we need to look at now versus later. And so I'm encouraging, you know, the board, those of you that are on the policy committee. I know there's a number of things. And Dr. Flores, you mentioned another issue to to bring before the policy committee. And we do need to address those things, those are very pertinent, as well as there is an ask for a resolution around racism. And Dr. Volkermer and the staff, and I've reached out to CASBA as well, will look at how we can look at that for now and then look deeper at our, you know, policy. I think that is so important. And then lastly, I want to, I had, someone sent me some information. I was very excited to hear, you know, wellness centers and mental health is very important. And right now, we're in a time where where we're all gonna see things that we haven't seen before, combined together with, you know, where we are just in the world of of issues and in addition to COVID that is still here. And so I found out that, and Dr. Volkermer, I'm not sure if that's on your list. And if so, you can expand more. But we had a recognition for Wellness Initiative at Sierra. And so that that's great. And I know that was something that the previous leadership was working on. And there is a recognition around that, and I was grateful for that. Rose Bamentry kind of sent that information to me. And I was glad to see us in a recognition once again. So you might want to do a little research around that. All right. And so if that is all of our board comments, we will now hear from our interim superintendent, Dr. Volkermer.
Thank you. Thank you, President Rogers. As I know you are board and you've already communicated this evening, deeply saddened by the tragic death of George Floyd and the recent events in our country. They're painful reminders, but reminders nonetheless and reminders that we need to have that we have much work left to do. I did send a message to the community yesterday around the this issue and these issues. And just wanted the board to know that and and that I'm praying for our city and our nation in terms of peace and healing. But we do have, we do have a lot of work to do. I'm not familiar with that recognition, Madam President. So we will look that up, because you know I love to brag about the district. We said we'll brag a couple of times, not about that. We did, Dr. Wyatt mentioned the Video Production Award that we won. And I'm gonna actually turn it over to Linda Hill to tell us a little bit more about, Linda Hill. Sorry, Linda, you'd think after all these years. I'm gonna turn over to Linda Bardier, and she's gonna tell us a little bit more about that award.
Well, good evening all. And all of the kudos and compliments go to Daniel Tisdale and David Chavez for their work on the video. They did an amazing job collaborating with Loma Linda's Gateway College with Bing Wong Barton and with Pacific High School's Bio Medical Academy on the Vision to Succeed video that did win first place. We're so proud of them. If you want to see the video, just search SBCUSD Vision to Succeed on YouTube. And it's a real quick video, I think about one minute long, and you will be amazed. I'm so proud of the team and thank you for giving me a chance to do a shout out for them.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Thank you to your team. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you to your team for their expertise and gaining some recognition. What Linda didn't mention, board, is this does come with a $10,000 award. So our budget problems are solved. We don't have to worry about our budget anymore. But actually, we will be able to use that money for some program development. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you again, Linda. And then finally, board, I wanted to let you know that I was honored last Thursday, I believe it was, May 28th, to participate in a Linked Learning Alliance webinar. Some of you are on that same webinar, highlighting two of our career pathways, both at a Royal Valley High School that had received gold certification, that's a business logistics academy, and our Digital Media Arts Academy at a Royal Valley. Featured presenters were Bernardo Valenzuela, principal, teachers Vince Warsaw, Damian Lozano, Natasha Flores Noronjo, and Dimitri Karnopoulos. And then students Francisco Mondragon, Beautiful Shields, and Helica Trevino. We're so proud of what they've accomplished at a Royal Valley. I believe they are the first school in the state, if I remember correctly, to have three gold certified career pathways. So we're very proud of that work. We've got a number of other pathways that are well on their way to that level of recognition. So we're very excited about that. But we wanted to highlight that, you know, when you've got the best, the best get called to present. And there they were, doing a great job representing our district and sharing all the terrific work they've done on behalf of our kids. So thank you, those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you so much. And now, if there are no, let's see, my screen slid. Okay, we are 10.1 approval of the consent items. Are there any items to pull?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Um, is there any discussion or anything? We're good? If not, I'm gonna call for the vote. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
And Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you so much. Moving down, 11.1 Personnel Report Number 20, dated June 20, June 2nd, 2020.
As as presented.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and second.
Discussion, can we have a lengthy discussion?
No. Okay, we're gonna take a vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. 11.2 Special Program Expenditures Business Services. So move.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. And is there any discussion?
I need to go to the restroom.
Okay, no. All right, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, 11.3 Approved Postponement of Budget Hearing and Adoption for 2021 Business Services.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in property second. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. All right, we're at 12.1 Review Abort Request. Will that be Dr. Menares?
That would be.
There she is.
If I've got everything. So the first one is, Dr. Flores asked that we look at a SERP as an option if we need to give out pink slips. There was just a general reminder to make sure that board members were participating in all budget meetings, so to have them as board meetings, and that's already taken care of. Dr. Flores asked that we agendize a revision to our voter registration policy at some time. Dr. Flores asked that we share with the public our arrest protocols. Dr. Wyatt, I don't think this was a formal request, but you would like us to look into, are you our first Asian American board member? So we will get that information for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Rogers, you asked that we look into a resolution for the immediate and some policy later regarding racism. And I think you said social justice consult.
Correct.
Okay. And then the very last request, and I don't think this one was necessarily a formal one either, but it came from you, Ms. Rogers, to research our recognition on the Wellness Initiative at Sierra.
Yes.
Okay. I think I've captured them all.
Thank you so much. All right.
Two minutes, Madam President.
All right. So I've heard it, and we are going to adjourn. We want to say to our viewing audience, again, congratulations to the Class of 2020. We'll see you at the virtual, we'll see you at the drive-through, we'll see you at the future. We'll see you at the virtual, we'll see you at the drive-through, we'll see you at the future in person. Everybody have a great night and be safe.
Good night.
Thank you.
I guess.